Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call this June 20th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting to order. Let's start out with roll call. Ajay Chakrapani.
Here.
Syed Savivian.
Here.
Isham Al Kawad.
Here.
John Bachman.
Here.
Sudra Senkara.
Here.
Mike Bresko.
Here.
I am Mark Bachman, and I'm here. And our student member Hong Yang Wing.
I'm here.
Great, thanks. Next is the agenda. Any comments on the agenda? I actually have a comment. Are we going to have a director's report?
I think it would just be the kind of the staff report out, the brief staff report out.
So we'll see how that goes when we get to the end. Approval of the minutes from June 6th. Anybody have any corrections to the June 6th meeting minutes? Nope, no corrections. We'll call those meeting minutes approved. Next is non-agenda public comment. So tonight, we're talking about Town Center Plan Code Amendments and the next pass review of the comp plan update. So if you have comments other than those two things, now's the time. Three minutes per person. Who in the room wants to go first? Mary's raising her hand. Looks like Mary's going first.
Good evening. My name's Mary Victor. I've lived in Semamish 24 years. I did send in several emails tonight, or yesterday and today. One of the first ones says, "Last meeting," which was June 6th, "there had been some questions about are there mobile homes in the city and modular homes? You know, how are those?" So I had been listening to NPR, and I spoke to that at the last meeting, but I actually sent you the links because I looked them up. So they're just a little three-minute link and a little five-minute link. And the three-minute link is on like how you can build houses these days, and it's just six hours if you've got the prefab parts and then they put them together, and then how modular homes are different and how people can buy those maybe for $200,000 now, and maybe they come with land or maybe they don't, but how that improves affordability. So those, since those are germane to a lot of the discussions that we have, I hope that you'll take the time to listen. And the link, they'll read it to you, and it's also got text, and I like to listen while I'm reading the text because I just absorb it better. So hopefully, you'll take the time to do that. And then, because I live in Tamarack, where the white, the white plats, or excuse me, the white lots were done by King County before 2000, the City Incorporated at the end of 1999. The yellow lots were all permitted and approved by the city. And it's called infill development. So like, there's some here, there's some here. It's not like you're doing a block like with a plat, a short plat or a long plat. You're getting regulations that you don't get when you develop as infill. And when you end up with this many, particularly in this area, that flows this way, you end up with cumulative impacts. So I sent you, one of the emails I sent is the Cumulative Impact Analysis from 2013. I just sent one screen capture, and it shows how if you're developing, when you build a house, there's usually only about 1% of surface flow that gets down, down the hill. And then, when you develop the house, it switches to 20 to 30% surface flow. So if you do that for one house, yeah, okay. If you do it for two houses, more. By the time you're doing two houses, two houses, three houses, four houses, you do have cumulative impacts. And this isn't something that the people at the bottom of the hill where I live, we're not even getting noticed that these build because that's some of the code changes we need to see this year is if you're an erosion hazard area, there's this big swath wherever we have, has to be told. If you're a landslide hazard area, I think it's 150 feet. So when all these houses built, we didn't even know they were building because we live a couple of streets below. So anyway, cumulative impacts are big. And so, and that email that I sent, I think I sent it about yesterday or about midnight, I took the, there's some wording from the King County Surface Water Design Manual. It's really short, and I put it in blue, and it basically says cumulative impacts from smaller development, when you add them together, they have just as big as the impact as a large development was. So when we don't have, so this year, I hope that you'll listen, there are real areas with problems, and if we don't get code change, I've been doing this about, since 2013 or 15, we're not going to wait another 10 years. They need to get done on all the things we do. Thanks.
Thanks. Thanks, Mary. Who else for non-agenda public comment? Paul?
Good evening, planning commissioners. Paul Stickney, Semamish. Do not have a planned comment, but a couple of topics that are extemporaneous. The first is on the comp plan, but not on this comp plan. I sat in on all the meetings from 2013 to 2015 and beyond, attended every single one, and don't feel left out by not having a lot of public show up at these kinds of events because that didn't happen in the last comp plan cycle either. Hopefully, that'll change. Not a lot of folks know the magnitude of the policy guidance behind a comp plan. But somebody who did come here tonight was Mike Luxenberg. Mike was on Planning Commission from roughly, oh, 2012 or 13 until 2015 or 16. I first started coming to meetings in September of 2013. And Mike talked to me about how happy he was to be able to stay in Semamish. He sold his, his big house, and this was unsolicited. He just told me this story. He said he bought a house, you know, a Murray Franklin duplex off Southeast Eight. I can't remember the name of one of those plats where you have one common wall with somebody else, so it's like a duplex tile. He said, "We were lucky. Five years ago, we paid $700,000 for it. Now it's worth 1.2." This is just a point in having housing supplies for, for people who stay. So I guess I did get a tiny bit into tonight's topic. Anyway, I'll save my stuff for the agenda comment. Thanks.
Thanks, Paul. Anybody else in the room for non-agenda? How about online?
We have one hand raised online. Mr. Eastman, I'm going to promote you now.
James Eastman, Eastlake Semamish Parkway. Hey, I sent in some comments today to Planning Commission and City Council, but I've been thinking quite a bit about this middle housing overlay and why we're doing it in the first place, and that's in reaction to the new state law that allows middle housing on single lots in Semamish. And I got to thinking, everything I see on this is diagrams of a box with a lot, either from the state or the city saying, hey, you could put one single family home, or in addition, 2,000 square foot ADUs on it, potentially its other housing types. And I thought, if we create a middle housing overlay to allow people to start from scratch to limit the effects of bulk and scale, like, why would we even want to put two 1,000 square foot ADUs right in the backyard of a single-family home and have all these people share the same parking area and the same yard and just really crowd things in there when they're not of similar bulk and scale? When you play Monopoly, you can't put a house next to a hotel. It's just, it's not allowed. In the city, we have R1 for bigger houses, and then it gradually gets smaller for R4, R6, R8, you know? That's to a limit the effects of bulk and scale. So if we have the ability to start from scratch, why not separate these housing types by bulk and scale? Why not, if you have four acres and you can do an R4, and you can do 16 single-family homes, why not create those in a similar area with similar design and looks with house and yards? And if you can now create 32 1,000 square foot ADUs in that exact same neighborhood, why not include those as cottage housing, maybe that's separated as part of, another part of the development around a park, maybe around critical areas? Maybe the parking is buffered in a parking lot, hidden back in the neighborhood. It just seems that having the ability to start from scratch, like, we could do way better than putting, you know, three structures all on a tiny lot. Like, we're not being backed into this. I realize we are for houses that are existing, but starting from scratch, we could really create win-wins to actually promote middle-level housing because people have different needs. And as, as far as, like, you know, as far as I go, like, you know, I would love to do a parking lot out of the way with some houses, you know, tucked in the forest, you know? And really, you could use critical areas, critical areas, tracks, streets, parks, all sorts of things for buffers. So please look outside the box on this one. Thanks.
Thanks, James. Not sure, but that might have pushed up against the line of agenda versus non-agenda for this evening, but we'll let you go this time.
Oops.
Anybody else for non-agenda? Anybody on the call? Okay. Sounds like we can move on to our first topic for this evening, old business topic to revisit the update on what's going on with the Town Center Plan and Code Amendments project. Welcome to our little place on the floor here. It's good to be looking eyeball to eyeball and not down from the dais. I have dad jokes, if that would help. I always offer.
Well, good evening. I'm Steve Cecil with Framework.
Steve, can you get the microphone, please?
Yeah, there it goes. There it goes. And Jeff, who you've met on other occasions.
Couple times, yeah.
And I'm serving as the project manager for the initiative that's looking at the town center from several perspectives, a key perspective, looking at its potential to help promote affordable housing as a component of the housing stock in Semamish. And there are related and code changes that we're going to talk about this evening. We have been progressing substantially in many aspects of this, so we're going to give you a quick update in terms of some of our existing conditions, circumstances, and the audit, the audit of a code is really looking, what's there? How does it work? How's it function? And Jeff's going to speak to that. And we have a proposed or recommended approach to the code amendments that we want to review with you and make sure that the goals align with your goals. So with that, the quick project overview, of course, the planning area is the town center as it's been defined in a town center plan. And this has been and will become, in an amended version, a sub-area plan that's related to the comprehensive plan. There's this hierarchy. And we are planning to use the current boundaries of the town center area, which correspond to substantial numbers of zones that are a topic of our focus here. One of the things about the existing conditions is that it contemplates not just what's in place, but what has come forward as proposals at various stages of advancement for the future. So you'll see footprints here, for example, sort of the center area there, which is the southwest quadrant largely of the plans, development that are advancing through the UZDP process. Those are the footprints and the potential of a high school at the Lake Washington District. So we're thinking about not just what's there, but what is in the pipeline as it may come forward. And one of the key things that we have been considering is the pattern of ownership. Since the creation of the original master plan in 2008, there's been a lot of rearrangement of parcels and ownership overall. And as part of this, then, as you would any process where you're looking at potential zoning amendments, it's extremely important for us to talk to the stakeholders, and we have been having a series of workshops to make sure that we are listening carefully to what their concerns and thoughts are about the future. So the project has a series of stages. We were last in front of you as we were confirming what the priorities are. We are in the process now of selecting some options and exploring what those options might be for the future. And then, from there, we will be looking at a supplemental SEPA scope when you make zoning changes or plan amendments and making sure you produce the code concepts, and that's one of the things we're going to focus on today. So we can get to stage three, starting to draft some amendments. So some of the feedback, we've had February Public Open House that was extremely well-attended. And in June, that's recently, just a few weeks ago, we got the stakeholders together for some workshops, the areas that have lower-density zoning or institutional uses. We had a session with them, and then the area that are more densely zoned, the A and B zone, we got all of those folks together and talked about many, many aspects of affordable housing and the zoning. We've been working with various, the agencies within the city, and of course, this regular program of coming for you and in front of City Council to keep everybody posted. So that's all moving ahead nicely. There's been, there've been some common themes that come out from the stakeholders. Everybody sees this idea that new businesses, services, and activities in the city are going to be helpful, and there seems to be desire for affordable units, but also for market rate units that are affordable at broader income levels and address generational housing needs. There've been concerns about tree retention that have been raised, concerns about parking issues, of course, and traffic impacts, whenever change of this size, that's a reasonable and understandable thing to hear about, school capacities and desires for walkability. All these things are things which have come forward. Now, the stakeholders also, they really understand that the allocation of land uses in the Town Center Plan and zoning don't really align with market realities. As some of you may remember from the original plan, there were to be five different mixed-use nodes and five different commercial nodes in different areas. Well, the reality is Town Center is just not that big to have five Town Centers within Town Center. And it pulled some of those commercial areas away from 228th, which is actually where people are coming from and is closest to where people travel. So there's some misalignments with what the market will want to see over time or simply won't react to otherwise. The, the zoning approach that has this pool of transfer development rights and a pool of housing bonus units rewards those who dive into that pool and excludes those who haven't gotten and can't get into the pool because the pool has been completely absorbed, as we're going to talk about, effectively absorbed. So there's a fairness issue in making sure that over time, what should be allowable should be allowable for everybody and landowners here. No question that the zoning approval process is cumbersome, confusing, and really unpredictable. So with that, one of the things that we, we heard stressed, and this is obvious in a way, but if the affordable housing requirements and incentives aren't actually feasible for developers to develop them, they won't. They'll go to another community. They don't need to lose money. It needs to be feasible, and that's something that we can figure out, and we'll do the best we can. The idea that the Development Committee municipalities have the same goal of work together as opposed to adversarial is an overall approach, and setting it up that way is important. I think that they, the small property owners, there are, there are folks that have relatively small parcels that would like to do some things, but the rules are kind of geared towards the bigger parcels, at least that's their thought. And no question, the complication leads to some really illogical consequences, which we'll show you. And there was a zone, a zoning category that was set up going way back, which said, well, we can kind of figure out pretty well what ought to happen for these first five, four areas, but the fifth one, sort of at the edge, we're not sure what should happen. It was a reserve zone and kept in a single-family mode. Well, looking at this, folks are saying, now's the time. Let's really look at the, a few parcels that were left out as we're not sure what to do. We know enough now that we can really think proactively about the future for those parcels of land. So those were some specific and crisp things that came from the stakeholder workshops. So existing conditions, just to give you an update, the total number of dwelling units that have been built or proposed is now about 1,058. And as you may recall, there's a 2,000-dwelling unit cap on development, and that's part of what's been triggering this initiative, is saying, hey, that's not so darn far away. We better get ready. If everything that is proposed were built, we'd be halfway there, which, so you can do some quick math, that means that 94, 942 units would remain. And there was a study, the EIS back in 2007, I think it was, 2008, actually looked at 4,000 dwelling units. So that's been an outside horizon that remains out there, not as a goal necessarily, but understanding that there's a horizon. So that's where you are. You're halfway to your 2,000 number. But importantly, a key aspect, and the next slide talks a little bit about this, is that this thing is set up so that there's a bonus pool. If you, if you do an affordable housing unit, then you can build a couple of market-rate units. Well, that pool, when everything that's currently proposed is done, will be exhausted, and you can't access higher densities without using either TDRs, and those are spoken for as well. So what's happened is that instead of incentivizing people to up to a density that was called the maximum density, you'll be stuck in a situation unless you change things where you can't access as higher densities, and the number of affordable housing units, therefore, will also be limited. So this is all meant to anticipate saying, well, this will get us so far, but now we need to really rethink it, make sure it's clear before we move ahead, which is why we're doing this today. So there's a real stopping point to rethink it all right now. So Jeff and, and our team has been working on really digging through and really understanding the code and coming up with some observations I think you'll find interesting.
Okay, great. So I was tasked with doing a deep dive into the Town Center Code. I was actually first hired by the city to work on the Town Center Code in 2017. This is really the first effort in actually moving some of that work forward. So I just wanted to say that a lot of these issues have been known and discussed for a, quite a length of time, and they're not new. But I think, you know, having the opportunity to really focus on a deeper dive and have the stakeholder interface has been really helpful. And, you know, as someone that's worked with many cities, developing code, administering code, this is one of the most complex codes I've ever worked with, and I wouldn't say that that's definitely necessarily been a benefit in this case. So the first finding is just overall, it's confusing, difficult to administer, and relies too much on viewer discretion. There are a number of really kind of juicy topics and design issues that give the administrative reviewers very broad discretion in terms of whether they approve that or not. In other cases, standards are very prescriptive and lack maybe flexibility where it would be warranted. So it's just very difficult to, to determine, you know, what would typically be fairly straightforward math, like what is the density allowed? What can you develop? But when you start to layer the incentives on, it becomes very complex fairly quickly. Steve mentioned sort of the misalignment between zoning and market realities. This is sort of related to that, but it's that development standards allow mid-rise development, which is typically around, you know, five to seven stories, about 70 feet in height. That is allowed in Semamish. The base densities, even in the most intense zone, and we have some diagrams that will show this, are around 16 units an acre, and that's really more like townhouse development. And therefore, as Steve described, you can only access that mid-rise development, which is more typical of a town center, through this incentive program that frankly is no longer available to, to folks that have not accessed it already. Area-wide allocations of residential density and commercial space are overly prescriptive and make feasibility challenging, and there are some nuances to the code, like, for example, the Met Market development and associated apartment building up the hill were really only allowed to happen because of some of the interface between two of the different zoning districts, which allowed the commercial development to go down the hill towards 228th, rather than sort of a specific strategy to recognize that that's probably the most valuable retail property within the town center because of its location and visibility, and that's what allowed them to build such a high-value development. I mean, the cost to develop that, very high because of all of the infrastructure and hillside development, but they're able to do that because the property is marketable in that way and is available to, or can support a grocery market like metropolitan market, which requires certain economics. There's some duplication of standards that are already in the citywide code, and so one of our tasks and recommendations is kind of figuring out the right buckets for things, not creating conflicts between different code sections. And where we do want a unique standard that's specific to the town center, we can certainly do that, but we need to be a little bit more intentional about how that gets administered. Some of the standards are poorly illustrated and in some cases rely on planning documents that lack regulatory clarity. For example, there's a Town Center Infrastructure Plan, which is a planning document. It's actually been adopted into the code and is supposed to be used to review and approve projects, and it's not really set up to do that, and it has not been successful in doing that, and that's just one of the things that we need to remove from, from the code. There are these area-wide allocations of commercial space, and again, there seem to be somewhat misaligned with market realities. They tend to favor the interior of the town center, which from a walkability standpoint and in kind of a community design standpoint makes sense, but from a retail marketability perspective, it's challenging. And so I think one of the lessons learned is that when you put these plans and codes in place, they need to stand the test of time over decades, right? I mean, the conditions now that we're facing are very different than what they were looking at in 2007, 2008. We were coming out of a, a big boom, but then sort of going into the Great Recession. Housing was very different at the time, and so I think that is, you know, just one of the challenges of producing a code like this. The density incentives have been all exhausted, so some people were able to take advantage of those, others are not, and particularly for the small property owners and small parcels, as Steve said, it's pretty challenging. And we did hear from some of those property owners at our stakeholder meetings who reiterated that to us as well. And then, the final big takeaway is there's a unique process that's within the SDC code called the UZDP process, and it's very cumbersome and complex. Again, I think it was designed to get multiple property owners to kind of work together on planning the development of the town center, which on its face makes a lot of sense. In reality, is more difficult to pull off, and I think has created some challenges both for the city staff and for the developers to be able to navigate. And so we're looking at some administrative changes in that regard to streamline the process and make development more feasible for particularly those smaller property owners. Okay, so now we'll just show some very, very simple diagrams, and these rely, this is sort of focused on the TCA zone. So the TCA zone is the most intense zone within Town Center, and the allocated base density is 18 units an acre. And that is, again, typically around townhouse development. It could be like garden-style apartments, too, where there's larger parking areas and green space, with a little bit more larger-scale buildings. What we're showing here is a typical 400 by 400 urban block, again, just diagrammatically. If you were to take that 18 units an acre and you were to put it into a three-story apartment building, that's about the amount of space it would take up. And so the only way that you can either build more residential units or And so the only way that you can either build more residential units or build other development is to either access the residential or the bonus pool, which is not available, or you could do commercial development. The problem with that is a lot of the sites could not support a large-scale commercial development like the metropolitan market, which, you know, could fill that space. And so that's why I think you're likely to see more townhouse development projects, which is definitely, I think, an appropriate typology within town center, but maybe not in the A-zone, or at least that's, I think, part of the discussion, because I think the A-zone was supposed to be sort of the heart of the town center and the most urban and sort of walkable. If you look at the max density, it's 40 units an acre, and that's how much space that would take up to put multifamily units in a three-story building. However, just another confusing piece is that the maximum density is not really 40 units an acre. You can get much, much higher than that through the incentive program. And there is also this tension between how density is calculated. In the town center, it lets you count streets in some cases and other things that are not actually on your developable site. And so, again, some of the numbers that you see in the code are not actual reality. On a net basis, some of the developments in the town center that we would anticipate coming through that are able to use the incentives would be 140 units an acre and potentially even higher than that. So this diagram is just to show kind of a standard mid-rise urban block, right? These are about six-story buildings, first floor commercial, there's an alley green space in the middle of it. It's 70 feet tall, which is, these are all things that Summamish allows now. You can see buildings that look similar to that out there, but you can only get there if you use the incentives. And so that's, you know, again, the base density's 18. Typical mid-rise would be around 140, so there's a big disconnect there. If you were to build a mid-rise development, because the development standards would allow this, you know, height isn't an issue, lot coverage isn't an issue, you would need 12 and a half acres of land to be able to build that under the density requirements. And so that's where you start to see the misalignment between development standards and density. Okay, so now Steve is going to go through our amendment approach.
So there are various aspects of this. The generative idea that started all this had to do with affordable housing, and that's a code amendment aspect. But as we've moved along, clarifying the town center code and streamlining its administration, which are related but separate things, you can have a good code and not a good administrative system and vice versa. All three of those things are aspects of our review that we're going to be focusing I think that the affordable housing approach that we've been asked to pursue is to leverage the private sector housing development to provide for affordable housing within the town center. And there may be other strategies that make sense for a citywide strategy, and I think it's really important to understand that the town center is not the only place in which affordable housing could or should occur as the comprehensive plan and its implementation are moving forward. And Jeff can speak to that in some more detail, because that coordination is important. We're going to be focusing on the 50% AMI ranges, recognizing that income brackets and housing circumstances below that really need to be part of a citywide strategy that's related to the comprehensive plan. So we're really looking specifically at how to leverage the private sector market development. So in terms of simplifying and recalibrating affordable housing, this is a suggested goal and one that we're asking your consideration of, because it translates for us into tasks and the scope of what we're going to do. So the approach would be to establish an updated and really simple and clear requirement to provide affordable housing units, and then look at potential bonus densities that can actually be achieved. You can have an idea of how much reward you get for those incentives, but if the reward is not enough, nothing will happen. And if it's too much, you won't be gaining the affordable units that you're trying to provide within the city within the goals. The way we've looked at it so far is the idea that there is a limit to a bonus incentive. Say, there's this pool that you can, and if you don't get in, then everything stops, is really unnecessary. If you think it makes sense that people provide a certain density of housing and there ought to be a bonus to do it, why not keep going? Why, that artificial stop really, really changes the game for everybody, and we cannot see a benefit to it. So let's get it solved, get it, one system moving ahead. We don't see any benefit in the next phase. So that's our overall approach. And so the idea would be to really align the development standards with densities. So for example, the fact that under the current zoning, you can get a 140 dwelling unit per acre building, even though the maximum allowable is 40, to us isn't a logical way to think. You should have density rules, and they should apply to everybody to be clear. It shouldn't be based on some kind of incentive. From there, in terms of clarifying the code, the next set of goals that we're looking to get confirmation for would be to task us to prepare complete coordinated street and sidewalk standards. That's been a missing part of the process so far, and that that really needs to be coordinated with Department of Public Works and their standards. There are some draft standards, they're incomplete, and folks are saying, what am I supposed to do? I've got an alley, I want to do an alley, what do I do? So it's not that hard to do. There are many ambiguous and conflicting guidelines and standards, and we think those should be removed, they're not anybody's benefit. The recalibration adjusts relationships and requirements within and among zones. If you get into the zoning, there's an effect, something like five, I think, subzones for TCA, there's TCB. This is a relatively small area and has just a ton of little zones, and there's all these little rules. Well, if you're next to this kind of a zone, then you can do this, but not as much as we could if you had bonus. And then if that works, but they have to be available, because if they've all been used up in another zone, then they're not available to you. It's, it's, it's a, it's a bowl of spaghetti. So what we want to do is just say, let's make it simpler, let's make it clear what you can do and where you can do it without all of these inner relationships. The aligning the city center and citywide standards for things like ADUs, you've got standards over here in the rest of the zone, and you've got standards here, they don't need to be different, you can have one standard, boom, you're done. The TC zone we mentioned, there are a relatively small number of parcels in that zoning category, but it's a good time to open that up and say, what could they really be if they were more comprehensively thought about? And regardless, establishing what the potential maximum residential density, so the densities that the total does not exceed 4,000 dwelling units, seems to us eminently practicable and reasonable to do. So that's the overall approach. But then it's how do you administer it? And right now, there's a tremendous amount of administrative discretion that even gets to land use. You may, and that discretion is very poorly tied to clear criteria, putting huge pressure on staff to try to figure out what's meant, to come up with a reasonable and defensible interpretation, and it takes a huge amount of time and back and forth to do that. The UZDP process may have been well-meaning, but it is, it's not clear, it's not predictable. Nobody knows what's going to come out of the other end of the process. One of the new state laws says, people should be able to know how to put together a successful proposal, tell people the rules. We've got to make sure the rules are clear. So just having a direct, clear, efficient process that sets, this is what is acceptable, this is not, let's go. So those are things that, and this is important for us to bring forward, because untangling the bowl of spaghetti requires some careful thought, and it's really not going to work if we just take, okay, that piece is spaghetti, and we leave everything else tangled up. We're going to have to do a very, a very diligent process moving ahead. But from what we're hearing from the stakeholders and looking at the history and actually digging into this, our thought has been that we're prepared to do this and we know how to do it, and we'd love to have people say, that's what you should be doing. So we are in the process right now of doing some density and development economic evaluations to see what specific affordability requirements and incentives might make sense. I should emphasize that the market conditions fluctuate quite a bit, and we've got to try to find a way to look at it over a fairly long period of time. The market conditions for new residential housing are actually very, very bad right now. There's very little residential, new significant residential scale development that's going to come online after the current number of cranes and projects are finished up because of issues that have to do with interest rates and construction costs and a lot of other things. But over time, those fluctuations will flatten out, and our job is to try to look longer term to set what those are going to be. But we're trying to be thoughtful about it. Also, something the city can do is looking at methods that instead of just providing some additional density, you could look at reducing fees, impact fees, for example, for projects that provide affordable housing. You could look at a program that has been established at the state level that exempts certain multifamily projects from taxes for a period of time if they have a certain percentage of affordable housing. So those are things where the city could forego what otherwise would be income in exchange for some additional affordable housing units. So we will look at those trade-offs and show you, well, if you did this, this is what the response might be. Would you like to forego some income in exchange from some affordable housing? That's going to take us a couple of months to really work that through, to really mature the options moving forward. But we would like to begin drafting the amendments, many of which are not related to the affordable housing specifically. The affordable housing piece actually is fairly simple, once we figure out the numbers, but the rest of it'll take some time. So that's where we are.
All right, thanks. There's a lot to bite off there, I think. Let's see who has some questions. Mike, I'm looking at you, so I'm going to ask you to go first.
Yeah, actually, so, wow, that's a lot. And I don't know if I'm looking forward to or fearing when we have to review all the details, but a couple, I was making a couple of notes, and all of the complexity had, there was some purpose at the time, and I know conditions change and all of that. And it struck me that maybe one of the reasons was this so-called kind of birth cake design, right? And so, and that would affect like the borders and what happens around 228th and so forth. So I guess one thing to consider is how we manage that scale and meet some of the original intent.
Yeah, really good question and one that we've talked about, and I think our position is that we could maintain that as a strategy. It might look a little bit different, but I think we certainly buy into the notion that the edges, and I think there's some actually logical reasons around economics and other factors in terms of what could happen on those different properties. So I think we probably will make some recommendations in terms of how some of the zones work together and where they're applied, but I don't think there's a reason not to.
Yeah, and I, without changing the fundamental, if you look at the plan itself, fundamentally, most of the goals and ideas are sound. There's some specifics that really don't make sense in a contemporary setting, may not have made sense previously, but that's what you learn. But the thing is that some of these things are pretty simple ideas, and they're made horrendously complex to actually implement. So it's sort of like, okay, go this way and that way just to get right there, why don't we just go right there?
That actually addressed another question or comment, because it seemed like the vision and ideas around town center were pretty solid. And so what I was interpreting is, is the code was inhibiting the ability to achieve that vision. Is that?
That's right on. We probably should have said this right up front. It's like, when you look at the body of work, you know, the piece that really holds up is what the community wants, right? It's like the vision, the goals, all the outreach that was done. The, you know, all of that is still relevant and valid. The problem is that the code is not serving as the vehicle to achieve that. I would actually argue it's perhaps a roadblock to achieving that. And so if we weren't clear about that in the beginning, all of those community aspirations are still valid, we're just simply trying to make them more of a reality through this process.
Okay. And then I have two more comments. One is just a sense of what the, what impact this has to the current, I guess, proposed developments. They're still going to be required to use the existing code, right? And they're okay with that?
Yeah, the ones that are permitted or entitled would continue unless, for whatever reason, which I would doubt would be the case, wanted to, you know, reentitle anything.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, what we're not pointing to is suggest that the current proposals are in some case, in some aspects somehow flawed relative to how it would be done. It's just, it could have been a lot easier to get to exactly the same point.
Got it, okay.
It's really that, because they have been found and been tested thoroughly in terms of their consistency with the plan and with the EIS. But it's been a, an extended, confusing, and uncertain process to get to the same finish line.
Yeah. And then the last thing, this is just to throw out, it almost feels like you should just throw out all the code and start from scratch. It might be easier to start with a blank sheet of paper. You're like, oh, this isn't good, and this is bad, and this is, you're in the details. You'll be able to decide that one way or the other, but it just sounded so almost massive that...
Yeah, I don't know as we have made that decision wholesale, but I think you're on to something in that it is sometimes hard to operate in a system with fundamental flaws. But again, I think the main key of that is that doesn't mean that, you know, regardless of the extent of the code changes, that doesn't mean that we're changing the planning ideals and goals of the community.
But to use Steve's analogy about spaghetti, sometimes it's like, you know, it's just so twisted that maybe it's better to start with, you know, rigatoni or something.
I'll give you, Jeff, boy, it's dinner time, isn't it? The, to give you an example, this business of an infrastructure plan. So the town center plan said, well, we ought to have an infrastructure plan to go along with this. So they did some ideas and some sketches, wouldn't this be infrastructure? Well, what if it developed this way? Well, maybe the roads could be here, and well, here's some ideas for cross-sections, and here's some good principles that could be part of landscaping. And then it was included in the code. Wait a second, it was a planning study. It's not written like, it's nothing like a code, and it's got all kinds of contradictory things in it that are unclear. So in that kind of case, our thought is, you shouldn't be putting your plans into your code. What you should be doing is taking what you've learned from it and writing some simple things like, and it's actually pretty simple. This is something like, how should wide street be, and how much of the sidewalks be, and how many street trees do you need? There's a lot of precedent for good solutions to that. Boom, done. So it seems more complicated than it is sometimes if you just, just clean it up.
I said, maybe one more that just came to mind. This is easy. No, actually, this is not so easy, because, well, it'd be part of it is, it really does help. Like, one picture's worth a thousand, the illustrations you used were super helpful in terms of the, you know, use of the land. And although we said that the basic concept will probably remain similar, this will have an impact on what things could look like. So it would be helpful to have some illustrations that do show that, that the before and after, kind of like what you were showing, but on a broader scale and how it impacts the whole of town center. But it sounds like really important work and time to get going on it.
Yeah, no, I do think that it will benefit, the plan will benefit from some updated graphics and illustrations, and we have a team that's going to deliver that. So, I mean, again, the vision and the goals aren't really going to change, but I think you can, you know, spruce it up a bit and be able to express some of those ideas.
Thank you.
Ajay?
Yeah. Thank you, Chair. And let me just follow up on the way Chair's ending point about the bowl of spaghetti. And let me just follow up on the way Chair's ending point about the bowl of spaghetti. Isn't that part of the design? I mean, isn't that anticipated? That is going to be a bowl of spaghetti? Because we are working through a challenging problem, right? We're trying to make the city get to a point where we will have a lot more apartment units, like he said, there was a picture worth a thousand words, right? We are trying to do that. We're trying to make it more affordable. And we're trying to also make it a lot more livable than we earlier thought it to be. We earlier had a car-dependent approach to it, whenever it was, 1990, 1995, whatever it might have been. Now, we're thinking of it totally differently. Isn't the bowl of spaghetti completely unavoidable in that situation?
No. No, all I can say is, there's some complexity involved, there's some judgment involved, but it's not that complicated. The way your code is set up is to, is so complicated. I'll tell you personally, I've been doing this for most of my career. It's taken me months to figure out what you might be able to do, could do, couldn't do. And some of it's truly contradictory, what's in there. So, it may be complicated overall, a lot of decisions need to be made. But the rules for moving ahead in the process do not need to be complicated in that. It can be clear. And there's now a lot of experience with large mixed-use areas to show how you set up a process to work through. It's very different from the old days where you'd say, okay, three stories is okay, and you got to have surface parking and make sure you have some setbacks go. It's not like that. But it does not need to be unnecessarily confusing.
Okay. So, that goes back to what you were saying earlier, which is that we should have taken the principle for being a principle and the code for being different and being a code. And that we kind of mixed up the line somewhere or blurred the line.
Yeah, and it's all very common. I mean, it was well-intentioned, you know. It's just that the rules have evolved since then. And I think, what I think of as my job as a planner, you're right, planning is super complex, right? Sometimes I'm like, why didn't I go into something simpler? But I feel like our goal really is to break down that complexity and make it simple enough so that everyone can use the system that you come up with, right? Not everyone's going to hire Steve and be Steve, spend three months to figure this out, right? You know, there's a whole range of applicants and folks in the city and people that need to interface with the code. And if you go in, you're like, oh, the maximum density is 40 units an acre. Then you go out and there's 150 units built there, you know? Just that alone is just really poor messaging.
Got it, got it. Let's take that one step further. And there are only two questions. This is the first of two questions. If we do that, if we change that and make those things possible, how much are we infecting our goal to make it affordable, right?
Excellent. So, the cost of getting what developers call them entitlements go into their pro forma. How much time, how much expense is it going to be take? And how much risk is involved? What if I go through and spend millions? It's millions of dollars to bring a proposal forward. And I don't even know if it's okay, because I'm not even sure I fully understand the rules. That's money that could be spent on affordable housing. And so, making things more expensive unnecessarily is hurting. If your goal is to get affordable housing and to get certain kinds of housing and other development, mixed-use development, your plan's pretty darn clear than adding cost to developers in the way.
Got it. Then the last question. Let us say five years, 10 years down the line, we have, not even 10 years, five years down the line, as the transit comes closer and closer to Samamish, it's not going to be here, right? But it gets closer to Samamish. There's a lot more waste to come in and out of the plateau to be able to move around and to get all of those things. As that happens, isn't this the function of the market by itself? Why are we trying to do this?
Well, there's a, we'll have to see how it plays through over time. But imagine the market would change dramatically if there's transit. Transit tends to go to places where there's density, right? There's a chicken and egg, those two things come together. If you're, if you have land and you think that transit's going to come, would you develop this low density, then try to tear it down and build something that's more dense in just 10 years? Probably not. So, there's a little bit of a back and forth that's part of this process. What we have been seeing is that developers in areas where transit looks highly prospective will hold back land for a while. Maybe that's okay. I'm not going to second-guess where that's going to be. But I think the important idea here is that what you allow should match your long-term vision. And if it happens now, fine. It happens later, fine. But it should match a long-term vision.
And this will still keep us flexible for that, right? Let's say the case that you said. We got transit, we got more buses coming, it did the work, but we didn't do that. Your changes would actually simplify that and make us more nimble to doing that thing. Is that where we are thinking?
Generally speaking, the...
I am with you that the current one is not. I am with you on that point, right? I mean, our thinking in the past when we were starting with this is probably not. I am with you on this. I am with you that we have to rethink this whole thing. I am with you on this whole point. But then, what I'm trying to find out is that, are we building another rigid system in response to what we're trying to fix?
No, because I don't think, again, we're fundamentally changing the plan. We're just sort of retooling it, right? It's not like we're coming in here and saying, well, your height limit's three stories, but we want to go up to 20. You know, I mean, we're not even advising on changing the scale of development. Maybe where some of the allowances are to align with market realities, but we're not saying you need to have a whole nother scale of development. We're just wanting to create a clearer path to get that, right? And certainly, the transit piece is one thing that I think the community would like to see, but there's a whole nother things. They want a performing arts center, they want to go shopping and see their neighbors, they want to go see a concert on the new public plaza. I mean, this is, you know, there's a multitude of reasons, I think, why the community put this in place.
The other thing is starting to really dawn on me as I'm working on this, because you look at a map, and when you look at the town center, the number of constraints, there's a lot of wetlands and really steep slopes. There's a lot of land will be developed. There's not all that much land that's going to be left after the current round of development. It's not hundreds of acres or anything like that, it's dozens of acres. So, I think setting it up for reasonable density that will allow a great community to be built is going to be advantaged by transit, but it's not going to be caused by transit. See what I mean?
Got it.
It's like making it that much better.
Got it. So, we don't have so much to do rampant, but we have enough to expand.
Right. If you had 250 acres sitting out there, it's a different matter maybe, but it's just not that much. You look at a plan and you just can't get your brain, because there's so much stuff there that will not be developed.
Got it.
It's so steep.
Got it. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome.
Suda, anything?
Thank you for the presentation. My concern is, if you're going to oversimplify the code, would it be like, you know, like willy-nilly, right? No?
No. I think in many respects, we can strengthen the standards, because they'll be clear and easy to interpret. I mean, we are fundamentally urban designers and planners that are committed to producing high-quality plans and codes that produce the outcomes that community would like to see. So, I really don't subscribe to the fact that a code has to be complex to be effective. I actually think it's completely the opposite. That's been my experience, and, you know, simple codes can be extremely effective, produce better outcomes. And that would be our intention, not to relax rules.
Can you give me one example from our existing code? Like, what are you going to move, change it to? Just a simple example, if you have any.
Well, the very simple one that was the one, taking this infrastructure plan, this is a bunch of planning ideas and saying, okay, here are the standards for the streets, and we're going to have trees that will be like this, and the bikeways will be here, and pedestrians will have curbs, and make sure that the water drains properly so it's environmentally appropriate, instead of maybe do it like this and having a sketch that you can't really understand. It's just really about it being clear. When I say, the hardest thing to do, though, when you do these things is to simplify. The amount of work it takes to simplify something is far more than to keep adding more spaghetti in the bowl. That's one. Here's another aspect that I think is kind of odd about the way things are set up right now. It's sort of like you gain opportunities if you have property that abuts another zone. But if you're in the same zone and you don't abut that zone, you don't have the power to, for example, bring commercial development. Well, wait a second, if commercial development's good for that area, what's being, abutting another zone have to do with it? The Samamish Village, which I don't know what you all think, but there are a lot of people in the community are shopping there and going to the medical services and living there. An awful lot of that was developed because it was next to another zone. Well, what does that have to do with anything? It seems like it made sense anyway. See what I'm saying? It's just like, why go through hoops? Just get there.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Suda. Sayen?
Excuse me. In a beginning conversation, Steve, you went through the process, but one of the objective of the whole thing was kind of simplifying the process. My question is that, in order to simplify the process, we have to go through a lot of code amendments. So, is that required to go through the city process, go into the city council, and adoption before finalizing the comp plan? Or can it be done at the same time?
Can I interrupt for a second? Yeah, sorry. So, David Pyle, Community Development Director. I wanted to take a moment too, and hopefully we're not getting an echo here, just to make sure to clarify that, and maybe we haven't been clear enough about it, that the effort to update or amend the city's town center plan and town center regulations and corresponding public work standards that go along with that has been decoupled from the comp plan and is on a separate timeline from the comprehensive plan. It is a separate project, they're interrelated, but it is a separate project that will be making its way through the legislative process after the comprehensive plan. So, as the Planning Commission wraps up its work on the comprehensive plan, and we go to summer recess and we come back in the fall, you will be taking up work on the town center. While the comp plan makes its way to the city council and ultimately is adopted, hopefully by the end of the year, it's required by state law, we'll then allow the city council to take on the town center work in the first quarter of 2025, which will result in supplemental environmental impact statement being issued possibly, if we continue on this path, right about the end of the first quarter of 2025 and being queued up for council consideration right about the end of the first quarter of 2025, going into the second quarter of 2025. So, I want to make sure we're clear about that, that it is a separate project and it is being decoupled from the comprehensive plan due to various factors, not the least of which is we have a change in our transportation consultant who supports this work, and we had to go through the process of shuffling the deck a bit to reset the project because of that. So, thank you. Apologies for the interruption, I just wanted to make sure to clarify that on the record.
TCE zone, what is that and why you made, it was a reference to it, that's in reserve right now. Can you elaborate? What is TCE?
We don't have a picture of the code. We've got the ownership, but not the zoning. The TCE zone is largely at the perimeter of the, of the area. There's some TCE zone in the lower right-hand portion, for example, that, right in there. And it included, I think the church is in the TCE zone, I can't recall exactly, it's on the edge there. But there are some single-family properties. And at the time, the thinking was, well, let's not disturb the single-family edge. It's right across the street from the high school. There's now development that's happening. The EGA senior living project is going in right behind there. There's a relatively little bit of land, but there's some land back in behind there that there really isn't good access to exactly. And it might make sense to look at that whole area as a whole and think about how it might evolve, including, which has been happening in many communities, the religious establishments are looking at the properties that they own and considering how the portion that they don't have for normal use can be part of a larger future. So, it makes sense to think about that a little more expansively than just saying, let's not, let's just call it a single-family and look the other way for a while. That's where it was 15 years ago.
And you recommended to make it a change, or get rid of that zone?
Look at it, let's really look at it. It was a reserve zone, look at it later. So, we're saying, well, let's look at it.
But one thing to point out, which got to give Steve credit for, several of these zones, or a few, including the two TCE, don't even meet the density requirements of the middle housing requirements. And so, until we change the zone, you know, until we fully update the town center code, there will have to likely be an application of the middle housing overlay just for compliance. So, just to give you a sense of some of the scale of development that's allowed there.
You also talk about the code inconsistencies. Let me ask you maybe a naive question. Do we have to have separate codes for the town center that may be in conflict with the code for the citywide? Does it have to be different?
Oh, thank you, appreciate that.
And we have a standard code amendment throughout the...
Well, I think, yeah, it makes sense to have it as special zones and probably a special process, because you're looking for a level of coordination between the different uses, a kind of integration of open space and access that really, it's really unusual to have an area where you can put all of that together. And the zoning is a really effective way of doing it. It's not, but where it could be simple, and I think you had an example there, for example, with the middle housing, what's good for the goose should be good for the gander. A lot of things that are perfectly good town, why make it different here? Then you don't have to have that in the section. I think that, I forget what it is, it's 170 pages for this area. If you can get it, if there are a bunch of other pages where it's already addressed elsewhere, just refer to it, that's all.
So, I think, I totally agree with that. I think Steve's point is that it should be customized and specific to the town center. It wouldn't necessarily have to be like its own big section the way it is now, but I think that works. The other way would be to have more stuff within the town center zoning districts in that part of the code, but then rely a little bit more on the citywide standards. But, yeah, it should definitely be specific.
Yeah, it's a very special place, however you do it.
You guys, you made reference to the UZDP zone, and then the clarification was that that developers will work together. I'm quite familiar with it when we talk about transportation, one of the issue that we always ask, that developers work together is a common easement, easement between different parcels and different parts, that somebody wants to go to a doctor in a, doesn't have to go back to the street, drive 50 feet to get to another drive. I'm quite familiar as far as transportation, but can you give us other examples that developers can work together?
Well, yeah, I mean, there's a really good example having to do with the development of an access road that's associated with Samamish Village. And that was a special improvement district, that the portion of it, it had to be built, and it continues up the hill, but Samamish Village paid for it with the expectation that the future folks up the hill would pay for the rest of it. Well, it's been a few years, and the UZDP process and other factors, the development's not happened yet. So, there they are, they've done the right thing by coordinating their development and the access so that it will access other people in the future and save a lot of money and a lot of approval processes. So, that's just anticipating what the neighbors are going to do. And that's through coordination with the city. That's the kind of thing that you can do in town center that will be really beneficial over time. So, keeping those, where can the streets go? How do various property owners, including the city, is part of this, right? You guys have rights away and other lands, how can you work together so that it comes out best? There are benefits, I think, as it evolved, having relatively few property owners, there are a mix of small properties and great big property owners. When this whole plan was kicked off, there, it was pretty broken up, the ownership, there was quite a diverse ownership there. And some of this collaboration would have been more difficult, frankly. been more difficult, frankly. So, but the folks that we've talked to are really looking forward to figuring it out.
Mike brought up the wedding cake concept that has been discussed so many times and all that. Are you looking at possibly to also looking at possible buffer zones between R1 zones and the wedding cake concept?
Yeah. I mean, I think, there's a fair, there's a fair amount of opportunity within the code, but in perhaps one of the city staff, Department of Community Development staff can correct me on this, but some of this is at the discretion of the reviewer. It's not clear what that buffer really ought to be. And those are the kinds of things that being just simple and clear would make life better.
You talk about the allocated density versus maximum density. Are we looking at a combination of both?
Yes. Well, the allocated density, the overall approach from the start has been to say, leave the allocated density alone. That's sort of the base density. And that's continuing to seem sensible. We've not heard any fundamental reason why to change that. Taking a look at what the maximum attainable density might be is worth looking at in a clear way. As Jeff pointed out in his presentation, we have this maximum, maximum density of 40 units per acre, but not really. Because if you use transfer development rights, and if you use transfer development rights, you can get up to over 100 units per acre. That's 40 units per acre standard. Is it really 40 units per acre? Well, no. Well, what is the, what is the maximum? Well, it's finally, it's defined by the building heights and the footprints. Well, but those seem to be reasonable in terms of what's being developed in the right location. So it's not so much that there's a problem, it's that the standards that you have don't mean what they appear to mean.
Yeah.
Is, I could, I could show you a building and say, is that 16 units per acre, 40 units per acre, 140 units per acre? Same building.
Well, yeah.
And it can be any one of those according to your zoning.
Yeah, that's a really good point. Like, so look at this diagram, right? And so the red is the front edge that, so if you're walking on that street, right, you feel and experience a 70-foot tall building, right? You go on this, you know, this is 40 units an acre, but you're walking on that street, it looks exactly the same.
Looks exactly the same.
Just there's more land behind it. And that's why density is a weird metric.
In the way.
Because it depends on how big the land is, whereas the building could be the same.
And what type of units you have in it. So the way that you measure density is to say, well, those are transferred development right units. Well, it's not, it doesn't count toward density. Well, wait a second, there's a building there. Well, how dense is that building? Well, that building is only 40 units per acre. Well, is it really? No, it's actually 140 units per acre. You can't tell by looking at a building how dense it is. Ah, that's kind of strange.
Yeah, there's the, on the Met Market property, which I should refer to the proper name, but the apartment building on the top of the hill, the only way that was built is because all the density of the grocery store is being applied to that building.
So you're taking something from one place and going over here, and it's this fantastic shell game, and it seems to have sort of worked out so far, but because there are no more TDR or bonus units in that business of being adjacent between a B zone and an A zone that made that work out, that's limited circumstances. So that's kind of all we're saying, is just have it be kind of common sense clear and make sure that you don't end up in a corner like you are today where if you want something to happen, you're dependent on like TDRs that you don't have. Strange.
One more question and one comment. Question, you talk about targeted 4,000 dwelling units within the town center, right?
It's a horizon.
Target, is that, is that a goal? Is that?
No. It's a horizon. That's why, think about it that way, is that it's, it's the size of a box that was created 15 years ago, which was tested through the SEPA process and saying, well, it looks like here was what the impacts are if there were 4,000 housing units here and they could be mitigated. So there's a basis for that horizon, but what the horizon should really be is a combination of what you all think the final build-out should be.
So at this point, we don't know the number. We don't know the number with all the code amendments and so forth.
That's a little bit, we're going to be bringing that back and saying, if you rejigger the rules, because you don't, you got to do something about the housing density bonus. TDRs don't look likely to happen in the future. Certainly, the city, this gets really into the weeds, but given the way that you're looking at this, do you want to shift your density, your maximum density in the rules so it's more rational? And what will you end up with? If, personally, I don't see a circumstance as a way to do this unless you really wanted to, where you would be exceeding that horizon of about 4,000 housing units. So it's, it's a convenient limit that was established a while back in terms of a maximum study, but we're not bound to it. It's not like we're trying to get 4,000 housing units. David, is that fair?
Yeah, it's really a ruler or benchmark that's used to evaluate potential impacts that could come with development of that number of units over time. That then, you know, remember that an environmental impact statement is not a permit or approval or authorization, rather it's a disclosure document that is intended to identify potential impacts, mostly potential significant adverse impacts. And those are then reported out to the decision-makers as part of the policy process, so to you all, to the city council, and that we are then supposed to use those to understand whether or not we want to proceed. Now, even if there are significant adverse environmental impacts, that doesn't mean that the decision-makers can't proceed with the proposal. It simply means that they're aware of them and that they're aware of those implications. And I think that's really important to keep in mind here is, what we're trying to do is, is look at a range of increase in density, understand what impacts that brings, understand where the barriers in code exist, where the barriers in the policy exist, and what, where we might be able to reform this in a way that would really result in, in a better delivery of housing, diverse and affordable housing really specifically, in the town center. And, you know, it's, it's, one of the challenges that we've seen is that this plan's been in place for quite some time. We've had, you know, I think Jeff and Steve did a fabulous job describing many of the challenges we've identified as part of this process. Many of them we knew about already. You know, as Jeff said, when he first started working here, he kind of picked up on these, that this would be challenging. And one way to think about this is that when your predecessors were sitting in this room talking about creation of this plan, they were challenged by a whole host of issues in trying to balance things in the community. And, you know, it's, it's an iterative process, and sometimes when you're going through creation of policy and code, you add one thing and then you add something else, and then there's an immediate tension created. So what we're trying to do is to simplify this, and we've heard a lot over the years that one of our really high priorities as a community is diverse and affordable housing. And we're really trying to streamline this and set it up in a way that we can actually see that delivered, you know, within, within the next planning horizon, because I think it's something that, that we are recognizing is an absolute urgency in terms of, of community development.
Yeah, and I just emphasize out of this, and one of the reviews we did was to look really carefully at the, at the town center plan, and what we found is that fundamentally, the vision, the objectives, the goals remain sound and consistent with other plans and policies. Where things fell down was in implementation and moving it ahead. And the zoning was set up to say, well, let's go this far, and then let's just, let's just stop and check and make sure, and calibrate it again. Well, that's just what we're doing. So we're doing exactly what the plan predicted. We did find some specifics that probably don't make sense looking forward. I'll give you a very specific thing, and it's pretty obvious. They tended to illustrate what the, what the town center might look like in an artistic vision in the future. Well, it's easy to take those things too seriously, and it was a nice guess, but the world's very different from some of those diagrams. But they were just meant as illustrations anyway. One of the things that we tend to do is we illustrate what could occur, but don't make that part of your plan. It's a long process with a lot of people involved, a lot of decisions. You can't guess ahead of time exactly what it's going to look like. So we would suggest that some of the, 15 years ago, what someone drew where buildings would be was probably a little bit ambitious. But fundamentally, it's good. It's really good.
So my comment has to do with the suggestion that as a way of encouraging developers to come and build affordable housing was to two things that you mentioned, tax exemption and impact fees. Tax exemption doesn't bother me because it's not going to affect directly us, but the traffic impact fees, I'm sure that you know that in our city, we don't have that much of a tax because we don't have that much retail and impact fee.
Yeah.
The main source of developing transportation infrastructure and all that. So if you're reducing that, you don't have enough money to.
Yeah. It may not be a good trade-off for the, it may not be. I'm not suggesting it is a good trade-off.
But I just want to bring it.
Yeah, yeah. It's not obvious exactly where that would be, but it's important to consider it so that you understand what those trade-offs are.
So before going to you, John, I want to ask a question that I think is important to clarify. Is it, I believe that the city of Samamish has an approved plan to build 2,000 dwelling units and some number of square footage of commercial space that I don't recall, 400,000? I may not have that.
A little north of that, yeah.
Yeah. Is it the objective of this exercise to find a way to build 4,000 units and increase the commercial space? And I ask that because people who are not familiar with the details of what we're talking about will hear this and think that that's our objective. And I want to be clear with anybody who happens, in the unlikely event, somebody watches the video of this, whether is that a goal? Is that an objective of this effort?
No.
Great.
No. I was just probably saying that the plan itself was valid. It predicted what could occur under certain circumstances, maybe 4,000 housing units. It didn't, it didn't envision much more commercial development than it was in the zoning. But what, what Samamish very unusually did was to say, well, we're just going to cap the amount for a while, and you're not there yet, but you will be there. And because there's a cap, and because some of the incentives are fully absorbed, the game's changed, right? People can't play the game. It's like the game board, there's no more cards to pull out of the pile. So you've got to reset, you've got to recalibrate, but fundamentally, there's not, there's not a goal of making a bigger plan or a different plan, it's making it work better.
Yeah, I think being clear about that may allow more productive conversation about the.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm glad that you brought that point up because I was going to actually follow up that, the follow, the part of the question of the 4,000. I immediately was going to ask you, okay, 4,000 total, 2,700 affordable, so the remaining is going to be?
Oh, no, not 2,700 for 4,000, no.
I think that you probably don't want to kind of mention target because Chairman is right, because as soon as they see 4,000, they don't understand.
No.
That is, does a number, maybe assume, maybe use some other words, because target is kind of too strict.
Yeah, target's not the right idea. That's why I say it's horizon, it's an imaginable horizon that was out there, the study before we bring it to your attention, because there's, there was some SEPA studies, impact studies that suggested that that, that if it were to get that big, the impacts might be mitigated, but that's more for procedurally looking ahead. What the zoning and the plan never said is, when you get to 2,000 units, stop everything, even though there's going to be a lot of empty land and a lot of zoning and a lot of perfect opportunities to continue fulfill a vision. We're just looking beyond that and seeing how far we can see.
Yeah, I'd just remind everybody that in a soundbite world, we have to be careful what the soundbite.
Yeah.
Turns out to be.
Yeah.
John, questions do you have?
So this conversation's been great because it's answered most of my questions. So I'm not going, not going to go there. Thank you, David, for clarifying the relationship between the town center plan and comp plan. So just to reiterate Sayed's comment about funding, since I was on the Fiscal Sustainability Committee, finance director might be down your throat if revenue is reduced too much since we have a projected shortfall. So in general, well, I support the way forward, the work you're doing. I don't, I don't think you're trying to simplify as much as you're trying to create consistency and predictability. That's, those would be the watchwords, I think, for a developer that wants to get funding for a project and put a shovel on the ground.
That's, that's a much better way to phrase it. I will use that. It's a much better way.
So that's all I have.
Clear. Clear, a clear way.
Hey, Sean.
The thought I had, it ties to what John just said about codes and complexity. In my line of work, we deal with NFPA, and for someone who's not familiar with NFPA, NFPA is very complicated, and it's not the most straightforward code. But there is a very good reason for every single item that's there that I don't like. When I sit with code experts, they tell me it's there because of so and so, and it saves lives, and that's why they put it there. When we streamline our processes, I hope we just, again, we look at the downstream of the changes we do, that they were put there for a reason, and maybe some of the reasons they are no longer there, but we need just to, to make sure that we cross all those boxes or check all those boxes before we make changes. When you started the presentation, you referenced some parcels that in the past we were not so sure about them. There was a mention about some parcels that in the past we were not so sure.
The TCE parcels, the ones that, I wish we had a zoning.
Oh, that's the same one that?
Yeah, that there was, there were a few parcels at the edges that they said, we don't know exactly how this will evolve, we can't figure it out yet, so we're just going to kind of keep the zoning the way it is, knowing in the future sometime, they call it a reserve zone. At some future time, let's try to figure it out. Well, things have changed enough now that it behooves, we think, it behooves you to take a look. It doesn't mean it should change. It means let's take a look at it and then either preserve it in its form, but that idea of collaboration among property owners looks like it could unlock an area that is otherwise kind of stuck.
Yeah.
So it's just a good idea to look at it.
Looking at this map, I know that we've developed some town homes, we developed the YMCA here, the C Hall, we developed Metropolitan, we developed the apartment building, and I heard that the apartment building benefited from the lesser density in Metropolitan. If we make amendments to these codes or if we streamline the process, how would the community benefit from that? How, if those changes were implemented when we developed these developments, how could the community have benefited more?
Well, they could have achieved more housing potentially. I mean, the, you know, the Metropolitan market portion of it could have included potentially more housing and more affordable housing.
More than apartment building?
Could have.
You mean by going further up, but how else can you?
No, because there's no housing on the, like where the grocery store is and all of that. That could have potentially included more housing if that was a community goal.
But then, don't you need the right mix of commercial versus residential? And I think it's serving a good purpose to the community now.
I think it's come out pretty well from, from what I understand the owners think and the way it's being used and the leasing. So in that sense, the current circumstance worked, but it took a lot of time, and it took a lot of, a lot more time than it needed to get to that same answer. That's kind of the idea. So just by making it less consuming of the city's own resources, making a clear way to get to a resolution would be good. But I think, to your point, it's not that, you know, fundamentally, the planning ideas were good, it's just can it, can the path to resolve and accomplish them be straighter? Really kind of like that.
Can I add something to this? Yeah, I would, I would add that one of the benefits that we would see immediately would be that we would have a more cohesive. be that we would have a more cohesive understanding about how things like streets and pedestrian paths and where a town center might be, or where a town square might be located would be immediate benefits. The projects that you've seen built here, not including these, the Brownstones West, Brownstones East, block six and seven, excuse me, blocks five, six and seven, and block nine, which are the core commercial areas. The projects you've seen built were built, I'm going to say, as islands. They did not require or necessitate deployment of infrastructure. The TRF project down on the bottom of the hill where the, where the Met Market is didn't require building roads. The Ichijou project didn't require building roads. And consequently, those are the ones that moved forward, whereas the others, the rest of the property, required deployment of infrastructure, roads, pipes, trails, town centers or city squares. And those items are where a lot of the confusion comes into play with the UZDP process because it's, there's definitely a vision for what we think we want as part of the plan, but it's a bit sketchy and it depends on who you are and what your perspective is. And it results in a lot of debate, if dare I say, argument over about how this stuff ultimately works. So what we'd like to do is to really simplify that out and just say what we want and show it and be clear so that we know how it will build out and we can identify who builds what when and, and figure that out because right now, it's not helping us. And that was, so that would be an immediate benefit is we probably would have seen this stuff be built faster, maybe in a different environment where there's a different lending scenario, where projects are actually viable, whereas today, they're, they're not.
Yeah, really great response. And I would just say that that project, I think, is a good project. Our proposal is not to say, oh, this was done wrong and we want to change how that was done. I think it's a good project. I think our point was just that there was some, a series of somewhat random circumstances that allowed that to happen. Like if the parcel where the apartment building is wasn't part of the parcel and cut across those two zones, they wouldn't even have been able to develop the grocery store. So it wasn't, like, it's hard to say even how intentional it was. It's just, to David's point, easier site, better location.
If there had been an out parcel, a narrow parcel between those, they couldn't have done that. Well, why? Why? Doesn't make any sense. So there's a kind of a logic that's built into the zoning that can lead to some absurd consequences. And we just don't see any benefit to anybody to have absurd consequences. Go ahead.
Anything else, Sean?
I'm visual, so I, I will repeat what Mike said. If, if you can just help us with some illustrations about this is how it will look now under the current codes, this is how it will look under the future ones, things more than what we shared in the slides, those big parcels with a piece of block in one corner because some of those parcels were shown to be like 12 acres and we're talking about 10 acre. So the scale doesn't help. I will still see it as a dot in a big yard.
Yep. I think illustrating all the changes would be really extreme, would be really important.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Han Yang, you have anything?
Yeah, just like to clarify a couple of things. First, I think you said that sometimes looking at density in buildings is ambiguous because of various factors. So what was example of something you might propose to clarify that requirement?
It would be simpler to have a density measure in saying, this is the amount of density, height, bulk, size of sites that you're permitted to do. And the notion that, well, some kinds of units don't count towards density. Well, it'd be a lot easier if we, if density measured density and there were incentives for housing units that were used as a unit of measure for housing units. That's the best way. If you can't look at a building and say, how many units per acre is there? I know how many units are in the building. I know how many acres, but the answer could be 1640 or 140. Keep it simple, keep it clear, keep, keep everything aligned so you can just look at stuff and know what it is.
Also, and also I want to clarify something about the 4,000. So is a policy you're proposing to get rid of the cap entirely or to move the cap to 4,000?
No, it's, it's just, it's a reminder that a maximum of about 4,000 had been thought about in the past and studied. We don't anticipate a reason to, we knew that there's a, there's a 2,000 cap and the logical question would be, well, if we go past 2,000, how much could it be? Well, the most that anybody's really studied or ever thought about is 4,000, which was done back during the planning phase, and that remains a horizon. At the end of this process, you'll have a better handle on what it is. But here's an idea. If, if you want to optimize by that maximize the number of affordable housing units you have, and they're being created by leveraging the private sector development, well, then the more private sector housing development you have, the more affordable housing units you have. What's the right balance? That's something you'll need to decide. So it's a, it's a planning horizon that was studied in the past that's, that's, that's a basis for saying, we don't see any reason to exceed it, and it may be less than that, but you'll have to decide what you think makes sense.
Okay. And one final thing. When the code changes, will every proposed project that currently fits the existing code also fit the new code?
Well, that's an interesting question. The, the projects that are in the pipeline now are working with the existing code and the existing code would typically apply to them as long as their application was, was in process. There's nothing that we have seen that would say that new zoning should prohibit anything that's been proposed because it's all consistent with the plan anyway. So it's not like that.
It's really just the path to get there, right? And again, we're trying to leverage as much affordable housing as we can as part of this effort, but we're not, this kind of goes back to the misalignment between the development standards and the densities. And so I think by and large, these projects would, would meet most of the new standards because it's, we're not proposing a lowering the height or increasing the height.
But, but.
The basics would be consistent.
It's, it's, the rules get, need to get changed in some way. So for example, some of these buildings have been built, would be, will be built if they move ahead using a transfer of credits, housing credits from city-owned land, some 240 units worth. Well, when those are absorbed, there's none, no more of those. So that game is over. Well, if you're to maximize affordable housing in the future and there are no more available, how does the game get played in order to, how do people, the, the, how, how do you, how do you create an environment in which there's an incentive to create affordable units and market rate units within the density that you've suggested is, that your zoning says is okay? There's no way ahead right now unless you, unless you change the rules. And you've got to be careful about doing this because if you keep changing the rules, people will wait and say, oh, well, let's say, let's see if they'll change the rules again. It's better to do it once and do it right than to every few years say, well, let's, let's, let's rejigger it a little bit because, you know, that's, people will sit and wait for the next change, you know?
Mark, can I say a quick comment?
Go ahead.
Just follow up to an email from David about the parcels that were under consideration here. They are no longer under consideration, right?
Yeah, that'll be part of the next session. So we had previously been looking at some parcels just to the west of town center, right along the edge of, if I could read the street name.
Oh, South Fifth and?
Just, just, yeah, in that area right there, which is just outside of town center. And the idea was as part of the comprehensive plan to move those from neighborhood residential to urban residential. That has been withdrawn because we feel it is naturally achieved through middle housing. So we do not find a need for there to be any change in the future land use designation. Yeah. Good question.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm going to make a slightly grandiose statement, I understand. And with all due respect to, respect to you guys and your passion for the work and all of that, I just want to point out that this is our home and we're going to stay here after you guys are done and all this has changed, and we're going to live with it. And if we do it right, this is a once in a generation opportunity to get this right. So it's important to me that we keep in focus, that we do things that are right for the community that has to live in this space for 20 and 50 years, not necessarily what's best for the developer. And even though this won't go over well, not necessarily what's best for the landowners.
Right.
We have to make sure that each and every step along the way, what we're doing is what's best for the community that, that all of us are going to live in for the next, hopefully, a while. And so I just want to make sure that it's kind of a forest for the trees issue that we can get so far into the details that we can lose sight of the fact that why we're doing this is to create a benefit to the community of Simamish. And we should always make decisions based on what's best for the future citizens of this community. So again, slightly grandiose, but I think it's important to focus on that as a primary objective for the community.
Understood. And I think our message is that we see some things that are potentially in the way of that, that are between the vision and the plan in getting it implemented within that vision. So our orientation is completely towards what will make this better for Simamish.
Steve, so I would only say that. I believe that that's true and I believe that you see that as true, but there is, there is some sense that I have that the discussion is around incentivizing developers to come in and build. And we need to think carefully about making sure that we're not going too fast, rushing and making an objective to get this thing done sooner. It needs to be done right. And if that happens in five years, that's good. If that happens in 25 years, that's fine. I'm way more focused on making sure it's right than making sure that we incentivize, incentivize development faster. Now, there are lots of issues that go with it. I understand our objectives about affordable housing and yes, I get all that. But at the core, I still want to make sure that we're always considering not what's fastest, not what's easiest, not what's necessarily most cost-effective, what is right for the community now and in the future. So I just want to, again, I just want to emphasize that that, to me, when I look at all of this, that's what I'm thinking about, and I hope that others will think about it the same way.
And I want to make sure that we use term incentivizing. It's incentivizing affordable housing or providing incentives to provide, provide public benefits. It's not incentivizing development per se. It's incentivizing them to do what's good for, what the community decides and is feasible to accomplish. Yes, that's very good clarification. As we come to a close, I just want to emphasize that we've been working very closely with your Department of Community Development, David and his staff, in that the presentation that you've seen represents a collaboration both in terms of the content and some of the graphics between us.
Yeah. I really do appreciate those comments. I always think of our work here as really working for the community and for the city, and we represent them. And I think, you know, we will take a similar approach that we have on previous code efforts. If you recall, we, we're successful in working with the community to reshape development in the community interest for Phase II development regulations, and I intend to do the same approach here. And that really is our mindset, trying to deliver the community goals that they have identified.
And just to be clear, I really appreciate the work that you guys do. I think it's fantastic. But in this community, there's differing objectives and differing winds to blow one way and the other and, but in the end, we do have an anchor point, which is what's best for the community in the future. So let's stick to that.
That's right.
Thank you.
Mike wanted to have the last word.
Well, I, I'm disappointed. I should have jumped in before the grandiose, like, you know, here's the prime objective of all of this. This is a quick clarification, maybe around terminology, and since four times the 4,000 got mentioned.
Yeah.
How I interpret it, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that through the EIS is the capacity.
It's, it's an EIS number.
It's the potential capacity with minimal mitigation could be reached. Our target's half of that capacity. And so rather than horizon or something like that, so is that?
I mean, yeah, I would say that ultimately, the 4,000 is what we would, would be an upper limit of what we would study in the EIS. And I think the simplest way to explain that is that was 4,000 units that were studied in 2007. It's simply working within the same framework. After that is studied, then we can have the conversation around what potential impacts are and how we dial in the code and the zoning.
Maybe I wasn't quite right. The point I was trying to make is that we're, our targets are well below what the potential capacity was. And so for people that are concerned about all sorts of, you know, traffic and loss of trade and the downstream impacts, those are studied and studied at a 4,000 level.
Yeah.
And we're half of that.
Yeah.
So, you know, I don't think, if that, if that's sort of in the right ballpark, that's all we need to talk about now, since like it keeps coming up. Yeah. I would characterize, though, that the 2,000 was a limit. It wasn't a target. We're trying to get to 2,000 so much as we're saying, here's a limit that we can predict and understand what the impacts would be and plan for the impacts, but before anything goes beyond it, because we, they anticipated more than that potentially in the plan, before you get beyond that, let's reassess everything. And that's what we're doing. That's, that's it. It's a kind of a threshold.
Enough said, then, but I just, like I said, it keeps coming up.
All these terminologies are important, and I think getting across the ideas, nobody's trying, we have not been charged with making, in the end, it'll be up to you all. At the end, it's up to you all. What kind of a town center do you want to have? And how do you want to set the rules to make that happen? And we're going to give you some choices. That's it.
And do we need to extend? Actually, it's mostly up to the city council, just to be clear. Good or bad. Yeah, would you go ahead and do that?
I don't have any clue how much longer we have to extend for.
Do you have a suggestion?
Yeah.
Okay. I make a motion that we extend the meeting until 9 o'clock.
I second it.
I'm going to move to second to extend to 9:00. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those, no, thank you. Anything else, gentlemen?
No, just say thank you. Appreciate the opportunity and lots of good questions. We look forward to coming back.
Yeah, I look forward to talking about this more.
Can I ask you a question? I know that we beaten to death about 4,000. Why not taking that off table? Do we have to mention that? Because that is going to create a problem and a lot of confusion. And Chairman said it because unless we really, we need it, why do we need to make reference to the target 4,000? Why don't just take it away?
It's, well, you don't, I think none of us know what your capacity actually might be.
What was that based on? Was it based on some kind of assumptions and values?
The only, the only reason we need a number is in the EIS. I mean, that's, and then, because part of our charge is to do what's called a planned action, so we're looking, it's more rigorous piece of, or tool within SEPA that new development, that if it comes in as consistent with what is studied, it falls under the boundaries of the EIS. So that's where you need that number, and it doesn't ultimately have to be 4,000, it can be some other number. So it's really just an upper limit of studying in the EIS. That's really the only place that we would need that figure. And then I think from there, it's, okay, if the goal is to leverage affordable housing, what is a reasonable approach to do that? And I think there's also some tension between an overall number in making sure that things work to deliver affordable housing at the site scale. And so we're, those are the pieces that we're going to be figuring out to come back with you, and we have a lot of flexibility in what the ultimate solution is. But the, really, the number comes from the EIS from 15 years ago, which was studied. We just want to re-study it again to inform our approach with decision-making for the community and then go from there.
Thank you, guys.
We won't mention it again.
Oh, I don't think that that's true.
I know, I'm kidding.
Okay. Let's move on to our next topic for this evening. Thanks again, guys.
Yeah, I'm not going anywhere. For better or worse.
So now we're going to talk about the next touch point with the updated comp plan.
Hey, David.
And I'm sure all of you have completely reviewed the convio, did you get it right? The convio version two and provided all your comments, right?
Okay, really, there's y'all. Okay, this is a fairly brief and targeted presentation, but I'm sure we'll, we'll have some good discussion as well. So the last meeting, my colleague Tyler presented some more information for you on middle housing. We have been working on drafting some of the code elements. What's that? Oh, I'm not sharing, sorry. Oh, I'm not sharing, sorry. Allergies. Let me get that fixed here. Yeah, so I believe on June 6, Tyler was here and presented some additional information. And some of the feedback that we got was a desire to understand, like, how might this play out in reality, right? Let's look at some specific examples and just kind of talk through how this might actually work. So that's what we're gonna do, try to keep it at a high level and just show some examples. I will say that the examples we're gonna focus on are focused on the physical attributes of the properties. As you know, a lot of properties throughout Sammamish are gonna be encumbered by homeowners' association covenants that will not permit middle housing to happen. For this exercise, again, we're just proposing to look at some examples based on different lot sizes and configurations, so you can understand what the possibilities are at a high level. Okay? So first, we're gonna go through development standards and limitations, just some of the things that'll factor into this. We're gonna go over some of the terms we're gonna use so that we're all on the same page, and then we're just gonna look at a few examples, again, at a high level. So, quick real refresher, allowing middle housing in single-family zones or areas that are predominantly residential use. Cities required to allow two units per lot, four units if one is affordable. However, the accessory dwelling unit bill requires allowance for two ADUs. So essentially, it's kind of three units per lot. And the distinction between ADUs and standard units is much, they're much less distinct now because of the new rules. We have to allow six of nine middle housing types, and any standards we put in place cannot be more strict than those that apply to single family. We can make single-family development more restrictive, but we can't make middle housing development more restrictive. So some of the things that will play into the limitations, so critical areas still apply, our tree retention standards still apply, those HOA restrictions that we know are extensive will apply, building coverage standards, setbacks, parking requirements. There are a bit of limitations in the bill about how much parking you can require, but I don't think it's gonna be an issue really for Sammamish because of the amount of existing parking, and the limits are not really that aggressive. Building footprint limit, which is something that we're proposing as a new standard that's not in place today. There is a total building coverage limit, but if you're applying that to, like, an acre parcel, that could be very, very big. So we have some of these controls to maintain or limit bulk and scale, which really came out of Development Regs Phase Two, which was a hot topic at that time. So, middle housing options, we're gonna just go through some of the terms. So infill would be like an addition or building, like a new building within undeveloped portion of the property. What we would call a carve-out would be taking an existing home and adding a unit within the existing square footage. So the building's not getting bigger, it's just being divided up into more than one unit. Of course, redevelopment, where you're removing everything and redeveloping, you know, not a likely scenario in terms of any sort of new higher value development, but certainly could, you know, happen. And then subdivision would be a larger property where you could actually have enough land to create another lot. There's also a provision in this bill to allow unit lot subdivisions, so any of these units could be, create what are called, like, footprint lots, so you just own the footprint of your home. But it is another way to expand homeownership opportunities. So we're gonna first look at a development example that we looked at extensively during Development Regulations Phase Two. This is in the R6 zoning district. It's known as the Highcroft Development. These lots are about 5,500 square feet, and those lots were reduced because these open space areas are here. So this land is actually supplying density, so to speak, to these lots, right? Because a standard R6 lot would be about 7,000 or 8,000 square feet, but you're able to shrink it down to these smaller lots. These homes are about 3,000 to 4,000 square feet, so fairly large on relatively small lots. This lot in question just selected randomly 5,400 square feet. And this development was, did predate Development Regs Phase Two, so back to the question earlier, this might not meet all the current standards. We did put in some standards around open space preservation and lots, standards around reducing lot sizes in that, as part of that effort. So just zooming into these homes that are within that area that was shaded, you can see that the home pretty much takes up most of the lot. The back lot line is about right here. The footprint of the building is about 50% of the lot. It looks like it's more, but some of that is just because the open space is, like, inside yards and areas that don't really show very prominently. It's a two-story structure. It allows three stories, I believe. So in terms of middle housing opportunities, again, not focusing too much on how likely this might be, but you could carve out a unit out of this existing home. To add a unit, you could theoretically add a third story potentially if you're within the height limit. Seems very unlikely since these homes were developed just a few years ago, but just from a physical standpoint, that's what could happen. The footprint of the building is about 2,400 square feet, so that would be just under our proposed 2,500 square foot footprint limit. There's four parking stalls existing, so they would, and there's two required for single families. So if they were to add another unit as an ADU, they could do that without providing another parking spot because they have four already. You can see here that there is on-street parking on both sides of the street. It's a little bit spotty because of the driveways, but anywhere there's, like, trees and planters, there's about one space associated, maybe two here. So there is a fair amount of on-street parking in different locations. Again, we haven't done a parking study of it, but my, I suspect that it's, there's some availability there. And if you apply, if, let's say that someone did come in and carve out two ADUs somehow, that would get you to a density, a net density, just looking at the size of that actual lot, of 24 units an acre. So, for reference, about 16 units per acre less than the supposed maximum density in the town center. Here is just a streetscape shot. You can see some of the on-street parking locations near the trees. Not a lot of cars parked on the street whenever this shot was taken. And then, most of the lots seem to have four off-street parking stalls when you count two in the garage, or, yeah, two in the garage and two in the driveway. So, again, that gives you a sense of kind of the streetscape in that neighborhood, and you can see the homes are very new and, you know, probably not super-strong candidates for middle housing at this point. Scenario two, we're gonna look just, this is actually just to the east of the Highcroft, so it's interesting to go from sort of an R6 immediately to an R1. This particular lot is about 49,000 square feet, so a little bit larger. It's within the R1 zoning district, so one unit per acre. Middle housing options are pretty extensive. You could do infill, you could do redevelopment, potential subdivision or unit lot subdivision, potentially with some preservation of open space. The R1 is an interesting kind of test case because it's, requires such a large piece of property, right? You can imagine how much an acre of land costs in the core of Sammamish. And so I think one of the questions we have for the commission and for the community is some potential options on a regulatory approach. We've gotten some input from Arch around recommendations for affordable housing that we're going through right now, and, you know, trying to look at balancing the base requirements of the law versus making these things feasible and viable. So there, there's a couple of scenarios that we could look at. One would be to allow perhaps up to 12 units an acre, which is kind of what I would consider a base middle housing density, would be half as dense as the example that we just showed you earlier. That could be done through the middle housing overlay. It could be tailored towards certain types of units that are more appropriate in these settings, like cottage housing or something of that scale. Or, the other option would be to allow what's called an administrative rezone process whereby a property could, property owner, a group of property owners could come in and ask to be rezoned. In one scenario, if they asked to be rezoned to, say, R4, and R4 allows three units per lot, you're basically at the 12 units per acre. The difference with that is it would allow more subdivision of parcels as opposed to developing multiple units on a single lot, which can look a little bit different. You know, these lots have a kind of a rural character that I think is something that we would want to look at ways to preserve. And here's a shot from that street. You can see lots of beautiful, mature trees. There's some gravel strips along the edges that provides some kind of more informal on-street parking. Obviously, the lots themselves have quite a bit of parking because of their size. This home roughly has more than six parking spaces on the lot existing, so there is some opportunity for middle housing because there's so much open space there. Oops, this shifted, sorry about that. We'll move that later. So this is scenario three, and this is in the Hammarack-Inglewood area?
Yes.
Yep. So, here, I'm just gonna fix my little thing here. Okay, so this is an older subdivision. You can see the lot shapes are pretty square and kind of irregular. The street network also is a bit irregular with some kind of cul-de-sacs and connections. This site has, is in the R4 district. It has a minimum, well, the standard lot size would be a quarter acre. This lot is a little bit less than twice that, so a little bit less than a half an acre, 18,500 square feet. Middle housing at a density of 12 units per acre would be about, would allow five total units on that lot. And you can see here, there's a multitude of options for middle housing. You could do a carve-out within the existing structure, you could do infill, and since this is a corner lot, there would be frontage along the side street. You could potentially do a unit lot subdivision, and, again, unlikely, but any of these properties could theoretically be redeveloped. So that is the extent of the examples, and we can go back and answer any questions and have some discussion about them. We're planning to come back for a workshop on the code updates, so this is not by any means the last discussion on them. We will then give you draft code to review and have discussion about that at a meeting, and then look to have a public hearing in the fall sometime. So, we've kind of, not decoupled, but we've sort of extended the timeline a bit on the code stuffs to give us more time to work through it with you all. And so this is kind of our first meeting towards that purpose, and I think we're gonna come back in a few weeks to a month to have another workshop with you on it. And with that, turn it back over to you, Chair, and answer any questions.
Thanks, Jeff. Who has questions? Maybe I'll just go in random order. John?
So if you go back to your, one of your initial slides on the exception list? Does any of the Senate bills extinguish existing easements or covenants?
No. It does not. It does, I believe, prevent them going forward, but does not do anything retroactively.
So maybe that should be added to your...
Well, that was HOA restrictions, but I can make that more clear.
I don't, I'm not in an HOA. So, like, on Lakefront, you might have covenant on a neighbor's property for a shared dock or something like that, view rights.
Gotcha. Okay.
And those are not HOAs.
Could also add plat restrictions, which might not be HOA restrictions. There's a lot of ways.
You could have a deed restriction, actually.
Deed restriction, yeah.
Property-specific. But, yeah, okay, I'll update that to make it more clear. That was our intention, but benefit from some better terminology.
Who else? Go ahead, Sayad.
Couple of questions. Can you go to one of the first slide on the subdivision that it showed, zoom in, a couple of units, please? Right there. Jeff, we talked about the potential of creating an alleyway and then moving the garage to the back. Would that, in this kind of case, would that work?
It would work, except you couldn't do it retroactively. But we did show some examples during, if you remember, during Phase Two. It was interesting during Phase Two because we actually found examples in Sammamish of everything that the community wanted to see, and so it was just kind of a matter of retooling the regulations towards that. So there are, there's some great alley project examples, and in a site like this, it would work. It's just, you couldn't, there's no feasible way to do it retroactively.
Dave, a question about the parking requirements. Can the on-street parking be counted as a part of the parking requirements?
It could.
Well, I'm thinking about the way the HB 1110 works and some of the other requirements, right? So under Development Regs Phase Two, what we said was you had to have two parking spaces per unit on-site, and you also had to have the equivalent of another parking space, a certain percentage. I'm getting into the weeds on this. There's multiple ways to manage it. You could require, you could allow it to be on-street. You could also allow, my suggestion at the last meeting was a parking study that could be done. And, you know, where I would start is requiring the maximum number of spaces that state law allows to require, given the fact that there are some circumstances we've encountered where we have code compliance called and neighbor disputes develop, where somebody's having, you know, a party, a graduation party, or a Super Bowl party, or whatever it might be, and there are a multitude of cars that show up in a neighborhood where there are no parking signs. And that's a bit of a challenge for us to manage. And it's an unrealistic expectation to think that people are going to walk a half a mile to get from an area where they can park to somebody's house where there might be a social gathering happening. So wanting to be mindful of that, my recommendation would be, and Jeff and I may not agree on this, but we'll get through it, is that you start with the two parking spaces and, or whatever the maximum state law allows you to require, and that you then allow for a reduction in parking spaces when you can demonstrate through a parking study that there is adequate street parking available on balance. Or, you could also even reduce the number of parking spaces in the event that you are within a quarter mile of an existing or future planned transit connection or, you know, bus route. So there's ways to bring it down, but you start at the maximum required, and then you allow ways for it to come down if proven appropriate.
Yeah, we, I'll just say one more comment on that. One of the things we did in Phase Two in the neighborhood design section was had a piece about right sizing parking, because there's also a problem on the flip side, like a development like this, if that street parking isn't getting used, and I don't know, we haven't done a parking study, but in, I have seen neighborhoods where the on-street parking is lightly used. You essentially end up with a road that's twice as wide as it needs to be. You've built more asphalt, you're running more pollution into your lake and whatever. And so now, going forward with middle housing, you know, every time you require someone to build a parking space, you need to weigh that against your community goals, right? It's more impervious surface if you don't need it. So it's really about right sizing. We don't want the streets to be flooded, we don't want people to have parking. We don't want the streets to be flooded, we don't want people to have parking problems, but we don't want to build a bunch of parking we don't need, and we don't want to require a bunch of parking we don't need, but we want to have enough parking. And so I think David's approach is the one that we typically take. Start with a basic requirement, and then depending on what the circumstances are, then there may be some modifications to that. So that's kind of our approach.
There's an interesting add-on bill that came out later in the legislative cycle that says that if retention of trees or other landscape requirements would constitute a project not buildable when parking is also required, and they can't provide the parking because they're required to retain trees, that the city is required to waive the parking requirement. So just so you know where the legislature is going on this, is it's favoring reduction of parking requirements across the board.
Well, there is also another issue related to the parking is that, as you probably know, everybody knows that these days that the percentage of automobile of the total number of vehicles on the road is shrinking, and everybody now has SUV. The dimension of the parking, particularly as far as the length, is gonna change, and I don't know if there is any recognition of that dimension, because in the good old days, when you're looking at, calculating how much of a distance do you need, how much of a space do you need, you would use about 18, 16 to 18 feet as far as the depth. Now, the typical SUV requires substantially more, so when we're talking about two parking in such a shallow driveway, I don't know, two SUVs would be...
I think we required 20 feet. Yeah, we could take a look at that, but I think 20 feet was what we put in place for a setback for the garage, but it's a good point, because you do see them hang over the sidewalks.
Also, as far as the on-street parking, you mentioned about additional width and a pavement and all that, and always when it comes up, I always remind everybody, go to the city of Seattle, they have a street as narrow as 16 to 18 feet in a dimension, and they allow parking on both sides.
They do.
If it works there, it should work in here, too.
I, we're very much focused.
It does not work there. One of my kids lived there, and I can tell you, it does not work.
As much as I appreciate your comments, I don't think that would be the right solution here.
And we do not want to.
So one question, and I had sent an email, some stuff in this, but it's interesting you picked out, I couldn't tell for sure if that was Inglewood or Tamarack, and I'm not familiar with Tamarack, but let's just say Inglewood for a second. That community, I think, is almost entirely still on septic.
Right.
And I've known a couple of instances where people had trouble getting a permit to work on their deck because they were gonna increase the impervious surface too much on their little tiny lot in Inglewood. And on top of that, Inglewood is an area that doesn't have HOA because of the age of the development. So I'm struggling to kind of envision if that's an area which is kind of a target because of the age, the condition of some of the housing, but then there's also the flip side of that, which is if there's no sewers and they're close enough together that the impervious surface rule, I mean, which, I'm trying to figure out what is gonna dictate whether that can happen or that kind of ADUs or tearing down an old split and building, you know, duplex, can that even happen there with all of those other issues that go with those older lots? And I mean, there's other places in the city that it's the same exact situation?
Yeah, I mean, you bring up a good point. It's hard to answer that definitively, but I would say, yeah, I mean, not having HOA is a big factor. Sewer is a big limiting factor. I just added it to my list because, you know, getting approval for adding another unit on your existing septic system, I mean, most people wouldn't be able to do that. Replacing a septic system to be able to accommodate more units is really expensive, might not have the space to do it. So I think that's a pretty limiting one. You know, I mean, my big takeaway is just you're not gonna see a lot of this anywhere in the city. We've, you know, again, looked at lots of examples, and we have partners on our team that have worked around the country on this. It's just the uptake is not that fast, and there was even an article recently in California talking about their attempts to do this, and they really have, not to be pessimistic, but they haven't seen a lot happen with it.
I would only comment that, David can roll his eyes at me, but I do think that ADUs are more of a potential than we're recognizing. And so if we're gonna put some effort into creating some kind of rules about, you know, the scale and how it looks and that sort of thing, that might be worth the effort, because I do think there's opportunities out there for that. And frankly, I mean, in some ways, if I could build an ADU in my backyard and rent it out for $2,000 a month, I mean, I might do that.
Yeah.
There's a lot of people that might do that.
Yep, good point.
We also see, excuse me, a large number of inquiries around multi-generational units. So I think in line with an ADU or a carve-out unit where it turns into a duplex, that's something that I think there's a lot of interest in this community on also, but that also is something that's a smaller impact to a neighborhood. So it's easier to integrate because it's not as big as a, say, a three-pack or something that might be resulting in a bigger structure or several structures.
We'll go back to, to the comprehensive plan effort in the beginning, looking at household size and bedrooms, right? I mean, there's a huge mismatch, so there could be interest potentially.
Ajay?
Yeah, I have just one question. In all our diagrams, we've seen all those units being there, we've always talked about impervious surface use and so on and so forth. The basic concept that comes along with it is that you'll have a lot of people coming, a lot of people coming in cars, and so parking will really become a problem if we achieve all the goals that we're trying to do, right? What I'm wondering is that, is it possible, instead of showing house after house after house after house, can we have the corner units just taken out as a parking area or something like that, reconstructed as a parking area? I've seen some of that in Bothell, where they have a much more, a bigger U there to help with parking.
On the side?
On the side, and so on and so forth. So can't we do that to do this? Because we are practically going into a conflict, aren't we? When we say that, yeah, we're gonna do this thing, you're gonna have three units or four units per, and then you're gonna have more of impervious surface use and all of those things. People are going to use it by having barbecue parties and other things, which means it'll exacerbate the parking problem. And if we did that bigger U, I don't have a proper name for that, but then if you did that bigger U, wouldn't we be solving it? Except it'll come at the price of one of the plots, but be that as it may.
So there are projects that I've seen in Bothell and also up in Snohomish County that incorporate parking, like peak demand parking for, say, an event or something with onsite recreational space, where there might be like a basketball court that's used that can double as parking in the event that somebody is having a party or some sort of event. I've seen that successfully used. It requires that people actually talk to each other and, you know, decide how to use it, which isn't always easy. So there's that side to it, too, but keep in mind that some of the things we're also working on parallel to this are, first, a goal related to our climate action plan to reduce vehicle miles traveled. Second with that also is part of our transportation master plan that we're working on that you're gonna hear more about. We're also looking at subordinate underneath that is multimodal plans, ped bike plans, right? And trying to find ways to connect the community better by pedestrian amenities and providing alternative forms to, you know, single occupancy vehicle or vehicle travel. I have a hard time saying that will ever be replaced fully, but, you know, I think that the effort is really there to try and find alternative ways to get around. I think it is a factual thing that fewer and fewer youth are getting driver's license. I mean, maybe our youth board member could speak to that. I mean, I know my kids, many of their friends are, you know, 16, 17, have no interest in getting their driver's license, and that's that. I don't know, what's your experience with your friends or cohort is on that?
Right, so I think compared to previous generation, we are in general more reluctant per se to get a driver's license, mostly because, one, the cost is more expensive when you're 16 versus when you're 18, and number two, because so many things now are online versus when, you know, back in the day was more liberating. But just that, a lot of my friends do have driver's licenses. Thank you.
Who else? Ashan?
Well, I just wanna say thank you for all the effort you guys are putting together to make this happen or to try to make it happen. It's hard. It's hard to try to do what you guys are trying to do in Sammamish. Sammamish, it's landlocked, it's challenging, it's not easy to deal with existing conditions. You just walked us through, I don't know, five, six, seven options that are really not options, but they are options. But I know some of them, you're not gonna go and tear down that big mansion to put middle housing there, it's not gonna happen, but it's an option. So I really appreciate what you guys are trying to do.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sayad?
Just a question from David. I heard the terminology of exterior ADUs. Two questions on that. Do we have it right now? Do we allow it? Or is that something that we're looking in the future?
So detached accessory dwelling unit or exterior ADU, right? It's not part of the same...
I heard that people are using it for converting the garage into ADUs.
So it's attached, then? Or is it the same building as the primary residence? Yeah, we do allow those today. There's a limit on the size with regard to the primary unit. I can't remember offhand. I used to know this stuff when I used to work more in permitting. But we also limit the ownership, so the owner has to either reside in the primary unit or the accessory unit. However, that has to change according to state law. We can no longer regulate that that way. Currently, you cannot sell one of the units or the other units. That's gonna change. According to state law, we have to now allow condominiumization and sale of the units. So that's another challenge, especially retrofitting existing buildings to allow for that type of condominiumization and sale. Not cheap, not easy, so I don't see it happening that frequently, but it could happen. It's one of those scenarios that potentially could happen.
So are we gonna be using it, are we gonna be allowing it in the future?
We have to allow it.
Thank you.
In that situation, what is the city's obligation to define things like utility service connections and how that gets divided up? Do we have anything to do with any of that?
Well, yeah, well...
Just thinking about, it sounds simple to implement this rule that says you can condominiumize these units without recognizing that there's a whole bunch of complications to...
You're bringing back some flashbacks, right? I had to talk about this in a previous job, but yes, I do think there is discretion among the providers as to whether, how the sub-metering works, whether they just have one or multiple.
I guess my question is more, is the city involved in that or need to be involved in that, or is there anything that we get pulled, the city gets pulled into that we should think about that lawmakers have not thought about?
One thing that is just disputes among owners, right? Like, one of the most challenging things that I encountered as a public sector planner is when you have a group of homeowners on a private street that's in disrepair, where they haven't been putting, you know, money aside like an HOA would do, and even some HOAs don't do it, and they're wondering, you know, why is these people who live on a public street getting their street maintained, but we're not, you know? So there could be some potential disputes like that. I don't know how much the city would be involved in that, but people try to get the city involved in things.
So the city of Bellevue has a dispute resolution program that's almost exclusively related to that. So I anticipate that we would have to either partner through an interlocal agreement or create our own program down the line, because that's absolutely essential. You can't just say it's a civil issue, you go figure it out. That works to some degree, but there's a point where you have to start helping your citizens find a solution. I would say that we get involved with addressing. Usually, it all starts with addressing. So when we're starting to deal with utilities and other connections, they wanna know what the addresses are and how the addresses are configured, so we can write code and regulate how we do assignment of addressing if we wanted to, which is very helpful to trying to unwind those scenarios.
The other one that comes to mind is trash, because the city contracts for trash, right? So when you have somebody that builds two ADUs in their backyard, and now you've got condominiumizes by dividing it, and you have three customers with trash service, and they each have three cans and...
And that's already an issue in some...
Does the city get pulled into, I just wanna, it feels like there's kind of this mandate from the state that was fine at the 50,000-foot view, but we just need to be careful at the 5,000-foot view if there's things we should anticipate because we have to deal with it, that we do that now and not be surprised later. And maybe there's not much, but it's worth considering.
So if you write a regulation, you have to deal with it. There are some things that, you know, I think someone wise once told me, you can't control the world. You can try, but there are things that are worth controlling, and you wanna focus on those. So I think really trying to understand what we want to control, because there are things that you don't necessarily wanna get involved in as a city. If you write rules, then suddenly you're involved in it.
Less is more. I like that. Anybody else?
I do have one addition to this, is that when Jeff started the presentation, talked a little bit about the schedule. So we have identified that the transportation master plan, which is going to be coming to you later this month, I think at the next meeting we're doing the TNP, or is that...
July 18th, yeah. Which is the next meeting at this point.
That, there'll be two meetings on that, and then there'll be a public hearing. We are going to be asking the commission if you would be open to meeting potentially the last Thursday in August in order to accommodate a public hearing on the transportation master plan. It's a really busy year for us. This is not a typical year. We're trying to make everything work and fit this all in. We feel that that is closer to, you know, school being back in session. Most people are back from their summer travels if they're lucky enough to do that. And we're hopeful that we could also bundle a hearing on this topic on that same evening. So we'd have two hearings. We'd have a hearing on the transportation master plan and a hearing on middle housing development regulations. And what that would allow for us is to continue to work on, with you on this through these workshops we're having, and would allow us to fine-tune anything through the summer and come back to you at the end of the summer with a hearing on this. So I don't know if everyone, we could send out a communication asking if who's available to make sure we've got a quorum, but we do need a quorum to hold a hearing. We'd prefer all of you, but I know that's not always possible. But just wanted to throw that out there and really appreciate the flexibility and willingness to, you know, consider even meeting on the end of August.
Sorry, what was the date again?
August 29th, I believe, would be the date, Thursday, August 29th.
I can be here.
That's great, yeah. Okay. Sounds good. So so far, we will send out a formal email just to make sure, but I'm getting a quorum so far.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Although we would like seven.
Six and a half. One other thing on this topic that is not quite adjacent to what we were talking about, there was some, actually some, I said, I don't wanna say it that way. There was some public, written public comment on the comp plan that I thought was worth definitely reading through and looking at some of the detailed review of the language. And I just encourage actually, you know, taking the time to look at, I didn't agree with every single thing that was in the public comment, but there was a lot of stuff that was worth at least, you know, considering the language revisions and some of that kind of stuff. So I just encourage that that was worthwhile.
Okay, will do. Thank you.
One thing I wanna just make sure to highlight is that with the comp plan, you know, we do appreciate all the feedback, and we'll definitely be digging into it, continuing to dig into it. We've still got a bit of runway with the comp plan ahead of us, but we all need to, the public, the staff, elected appointed officials, consultants, need to keep in mind that there are certain topics in the comprehensive plan that we've been given very specific direction on from the state, from Pugilist County Regional Council and from the county. And there are some areas where we may not agree, where it's worth fighting on. There are other areas where words matter, and they're really looking to see that their words are being used in our comprehensive plan. And we can take two approaches to that. We can either try our best to use their words in those specific instances and really not re-wordsmith something they've already written, or we can choose to rewrite it and debate it with them, which will, you know, take a little longer on the staff end trying to get certification. It's a sort of a self-preservation comment on my part. So just wanting to highlight that. You will see some things as we move through this process where we're gonna come back and say, yeah, that's language. We really feel that one of those agencies or groups is going to absolutely look to see that their words are being used. So just wanted to highlight that.
The other strategy is to use really small font.
Move to extend to 9:30.
It's been moving at second to extend to 9:30. All those in paper say aye.
Aye.
Goes no. All right. Anything else?
We're good.
Thank you both.
Sorry to be that guy, but we do wanna make sure we're leaving time for any burning questions or comments on the second draft of the comp plan tonight. for any burning questions or comments on the second draft of the comp plan tonight. And I think Jeff and David, while you're up there, you might as well stay up there and field any, any questions. We will be reviewing the convio links, but this is our last touch point before the public hearing, which is scheduled for July 25th. So.
Good point.
Want to make sure we leave some space. Yep.
Yep. And I will admit, I have struggled to, to do a thorough review and convio, but does anybody have any specific things based on their review they'd like to bring up? John, you, it looks like maybe you've got a burning question.
Just, just a brief comment. I mean, you can read all the stuff that Mike and I have put in there. The transportation element looks like it was significantly updated, cross-referenced. Just wanted to comment on the good work that was done there.
Thank you. I think I'll report that back to our, our public works director, who I know she spent quite a bit of time working on that to, to really answer a lot of the questions she heard and make sure that it was modernized to what she understood to be the current status of transportation issues in the city.
That's a small topic. Anyone else based on their review?
Speaking of transportation master plan, I hope that the public works would give us the document to look at it and give us enough time to digest because that is an area that I want to make sure that I have time to comment on.
Absolutely. We'll make sure to, to give them that, that sort of advanced warning that, hey, there's going to be quite a few questions coming your way. I think they already know that. But, but I also wanted to highlight with that, to keep in mind that that transportation master plan is our first attempt at a transportation master plan. We are including on the work plan and you will see as the council starts to, to talk about work plan and budget, an update to the transportation master plan in 2025. So we're really trying our best to get what we believe to be a complete transportation master plan in, into the comprehensive plan as volume two of the transportation element. But we are doing that with eyes wide open and we're trying to be completely transparent about the fact that there will be some things on, in there that will require some continued work into '25. So just, you know, with that in mind, you know, we appreciate all the comments, but understanding that there might be somewhere it's, uh, going to be a response, that we are, we plan to continue to work on this specific item into 2025. We do need all of the items necessary in order for us to achieve comprehensive plan certification. So those will be in there because we are required to have those. One thing I could also add to, to you all is that we are available to meet one-to-one with groups if you wanted to, anytime, you know, happy to talk to any one of you about the comprehensive plan, any questions you might have. It's a, it's a pretty big document. Even if you're just trying to, you're looking for something in there, then you can't find it, you know, we'd be happy to navigate the document for you to help find things. Just let us know, we're here to help. Yeah, we can, we can reach out and set something up. Can you do that? I'm actually out on vacation tomorrow, so I'm looking to Evan as I'm hopeful that he'll be able to reach out and set something up while I'm gone. So when I come back, we can have that meeting.
All right. Did I hear you say that we're going to have some transportation master plan issues that we're going to put in the parking lot?
We're going to put them in the park settlement.
All right. Well, I would encourage everyone to take the time, except apparently Mike and John have done their, their due diligence, but takes time to review the updated version of the convio. And then hopefully get any questions out of the way ahead of time. All right. Any last questions about that before we do public comment? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay. Agenda-related public comments, seven minutes per person. Who in the room would like to make public comment about the topics we discussed this evening? Going to do like rock, paper, scissors or?
Paul Stickney, Samamish. Awesome meeting in a lot of ways. Not what I was expecting. Lots of good information, comments made about getting things right. And I didn't have a, a drafted comment tonight. I took some notes in the meeting. I've sent some, some things in. But for getting things right, I'm going to be a straight shooter on a couple things and it may or, may not pass community muster. There seems to be an unspoken around what are the right number of housing units in the community. I've been working on for many years, a bottom-up approach to that. What's the right amount of different and diverse housing to meet community needs for those that want to stay? I've got a couple assertions. I was glad to hear some of you and the consultants say, we don't think much missing middle will actually happen in Samamish. I totally agree with all the, all of the HOAs. To me, it's about getting the town center right, which I've been working on for 20 years. I was involved in the planning advisory committee, not on it, but I went to meetings, was involved in the town center plan from start to finish, was involved in the first southeast quadrant, which is by the way where TC Zone E is. Town Center Zone E is the south and the highest point of the southeast quad. We did a second docket. We did a challenge to the comp plan over not meeting all economic and, you know, demographic needs and won. Over this time, it's taken a lot of time to get right what quantified factors are. But setting a number is not like counting trees. It's about each individual's opinions on what all the various quantified factors mean. Now, I appreciated Mark Baughman's comment about getting it right no matter how long it takes. But right goes two ways. If you've watched the movie Dune, when Paul Maudib takes the, the water of life, he sees past, present, and future altogether. What I'm talking about is that concept. I think we're 10 to 15 years overdue for a minimum of 10,000 to 15,000 different and diverse housing units, most of which should go for the holistic view in town center and the, and the other centers. We've caught up on parkland tremendously. We've caught up on civic buildings tremendously. Our stormwater costs and fees and systems have improved dramatically. Our parks, there's a lot of aspects to the community that have improved over 20 years. But housing gets further out of balance. So it really comes down to, do we want to have a modest amount of optimal housing? And I'm going to introduce a couple terms that I've thought of recently, and it goes to the 4,000 in, in town center. I think it's Samamish. We need a lot of units that I want to call hondos, not condos, that's with an H, and, and hentles, not rentals, with an H, because most of the units in town center, in my opinion, should be home-like condos. Larger, taller, larger parking spaces underground, more storage, more like houses so people can stay. Same thing in townhomes, same thing apartments. Yes, there will be some affordable units, but as I've asserted, my opinion is, over time, the needs that are missing in Samamish are about 10% for affordable housing, under 80% AMI, and about 90% in price ranges that are moving from the 500,000 to 1.2 million and going up. The numbers are staggering. I don't have time to talk about all them and I don't want to drop this, these couple nuggets, but I don't have time. A few of you have maybe seen this, but back in 2015 and 16, and this goes to the cap of 4,000 here. The, and I'm just going to state some facts that I'm happy to meet and share. The same offer goes of what David Pyle talked about. You want to meet one-on-one or two-on-one? I've, I've got this information. We had two studies and I, my former partner, who passed away a couple of years ago in the southeast quadrant. We hired a traffic consultant that did work on a nationwide basis who studied suburban town centers, not urban. And they had incredible metrics and data about car trip generation. And we learned through measuring. Now, when I say measuring, I'm talking about hiring cameras and counted car trips at Safron in Samamish and the Starwood condos in Izequah that have enclosed garages for the residential folks who live there so you can separate residential from commercial car trips. And we learned three huge things. The FEIS overstated by a lot the car trip generations per a multifamily unit. Overstated commercial a lot and understated internalization a lot. Internalization is fewer car trips based on live and work in the same place. These studies, which by the way, I told the consultant to give them the 75% factor. What does that mean? 75% the city way, only 25% development. Didn't want the numbers exaggerated. We didn't use transit. We found the FEIS with a correction to the traffic counts could handle 6,000 to 9,000 units based on the 2,000 that are there, even more with the four. So there's a whole lot more to talk about, but it comes back to, what do we want? Do we want to meet housing supplies over lifetime and legacy? And what are the numbers? I'd like to talk a lot more about that because getting it right is what I want to do also. Appreciate the opportunity to speak.
Thanks, Paul. Who's next? Mike?
Michael Mattis, 18-year resident, Samamish. Just a quick preface to my remarks. Somewhat legally adversarial letter was sent to the planning commission, I think to the planning commission, but I know to the city council in the last week from a homeowner in our neighborhood. And I just wish to assure the planning commission that that email was sent without our foreknowledge. It does not represent certainly our good faith efforts and intent in engaging with the city on the comp plan process. And I believe that's true of other neighbors of ours as well. We appreciate, greatly appreciate the careful consideration given to our concerns thus far by the planning commission, and we, we have no reason to believe that that won't continue. With respect to the southeast fourth corridor, it's difficult for us to foresee exactly how the middle housing overlay strategy and form-based standards will affect those homes and neighborhoods that join the properties developed under any new comp plan regime. I certainly don't under, I certainly don't understand it. We just wish to emphasize that our concerns remain the same, and namely that's, that there be some sort of reasonable transition in density away from bordering R1 and other SFR neighborhoods that are presently in place to, to, in effect, take into account the existing built environment and the people who live there. A couple of other quick comments. The parking discussion was interesting tonight. I just want to throw one other item in there. Pushing more parking onto the street will make it somewhat problematic for the people who either have electric cars now or wish, wish to have them in the future, of which I think there'll be many more, which is probably a good goal as well. So that's just another item in keeping, keeping in mind, considering the whole parking issue. Third comment, I just want to make an emphatic second to the planning commission's chair in his comments tonight about the Samamish and the people who presently live here and will continue to live here. I definitely don't discount the need for some updating of the town center code and standards, but of course, it is worth noting that the obvious, which is that developers are primarily, if not exclusively, focused on their economic self-interest and promoting policies and standards that advance those interests, particularly if they have consolidated and own the vast majority of land affected by any change in such policies. Thanks for hearing me out.
Thanks, Michael. Mary?
Mary Victor, 24 years in Samamish. Really enjoyed the presentations, the open house before the meeting and glad that we were able to write things and see things and ask questions. Appreciate all of your comments that you make, particularly the strength in the words that you use to do them. So it's very useful to be at the meetings. Couple of things I want to clear up. Every time they talk about middle housing, somebody's always like, yeah, we're going to put more of that in Tamarack. Well, Tamarack is suffering right now. We have 40 vacant lots. We have protective covenants. They were recorded before I was born and I'm over 60, so stop using us as an example. That happens at the water district meetings too, where I was the first place they pick. Inglewood, poor Inglewood was platted 6,000 or more units before Washington was a state, it was a territory. Those, those lots are 25 feet wide by 100 feet. It's 2,500 square feet. So there is a part in the packet, I believe I read, that said you were going to do the middle housing overlay for things that are 6,000 square feet or larger. That would be cool because then you don't have to pick on Inglewood because for somebody to do that in Inglewood, they'd have to have, and maybe the one that Jeff used was an example. There are people that aggregate four, five, six, or seven lots in Inglewood and build one house, but as was pointed out by the Chair Baughman here, there's quite a bit of areas in Tamarack and Inglewood that are on septic still. They're old septics from the 70s and you can't, you don't have enough room to do them. There's infiltrative soils and you're hurting the people below, which is why we have all those stormwater things that Mary Victor's been crazy about for, since 2015 publicly. So anyway, I just wanted to clarify those things. I do think that middle housing should be put everywhere it can be put. It, it does solve things better than just sticking ADUs with existing homes. It gives people more places to live. I don't hear the words a lot that we need smaller homes. I think we need different, diverse, and smaller houses too, because if they're smaller, I think you're going to get more affordability that way. So I had like some of that code that was in the packet before about how they were going to restrict the building size, that you had to build smaller. You can't just build those really large, single-family homes with five bedrooms and four bathrooms and filling up the schools and things like that. On the numbers, I know that they're talking about the 4,000 number or not. Again, I'm from Bozeman, Montana. I still own land there and I do some of their meetings. There is an email that I sent from, there was a EPS consultant from Denver, and they're located all over. He's really good. The city's there, has been using him for over five years. They have an economic development plan. They have an economic development staff, like director and subdirector. They have a volunteer committee that's economic vitality. And he had done a presentation almost exactly a year ago at June 26th and 27th, the two of the commissions. And he talked about what's the right number that you need to have a neighborhood commercial work out. So neighborhood commercial is like smaller area than like a town center. So a town center wouldn't be anymore. So I just, I listened to the things and then I wrote some of the stuff up and I gave you the link. You can watch it, but you should at least read the email. So the number that he came up with as a statistic, which is not perfect, it's just kind of illustrative, is that if you're going to have a neighborhood commercial, you need to have about 3,300 dwelling units around for the commercial to work. Because even if you build a coffee shop or a place to eat or a yoga studio, you're not going to be successful unless you have the customers to do that. So there's a trade area. So all of this is in the email that I wrote and all I did is I listened and tried to transcribe some of the key points. And it, it's just really important. If, if we try to do town center and if we don't put in enough units or enough density, town center's not going to work. put in enough units or enough density, town center's not going to work. You're not going to get enough people to ride the bus, you're not going to get enough people to shop or use the areas, you're not going to get the walkability and the things that you need, and it will cost a lot. So it, I think probably the most important thing for town center is all the, the history that Mr. Paul Stickney sent here. I mean, I've been doing this about 10 years. He's doing it 20, and I know we have somebody on the planning board who's been doing transportation for 40 years. So it really is important to listen to those. The most important thing we can do is to try to do town center right, to not rush it, to try to not make things, you know, out of whack, because we're going to kind of get one chance to do it. Also on the code, I'm a computer scientist. I used to write operating system code for like, does your system work or not? So my, my code always had to work. And if you do have code that you know what it's supposed to do, and if it's tangled up or needs to get redone, it is really good to rewrite the code and it can be simplified. And I really trust these people and other people that I've heard speak. They did a wonderful job during the development regulations phase two. We had citizen advisory groups where people were to give input, and in some cases, some of the problems I've talked about, we were able to get just three paragraphs of code with multiple words and, that really handled a lot of situations. And not that all of them are handled, and we do need to have development regs phase three this year as well, that can be done. So I think the town center concept and vision is good. I think the code is hurting everybody, particularly, I know some of the people that have worked for the city for a long time are part of the review boards for town center and like the UZDP and those things are just taking massive amounts of time. And even though the Public Works standards were updated in 2016, 15, and 16, when the stormwater code was, that that needs to get updated again. So I think we do need to do those things. I think we've got the right people, we've got the right time. And with all the projects that we've got on going together that interleave, you're going to be much more efficient doing that now than to push it off later. So I'm sorry that all that is happening, but it's a really big year. So every time that anybody gets up to the mic and speaks, I'm not going to be around in another 10 years. Critical areas were done in 2003, 2013. They missed 2023, 2024. We can't not have stuff done and have it float to another 10 years because we are going to hurt the areas. And I guess the last part I'll talk about is density is really important. You've heard that, that TDRs and everything are used up. It's kind of a diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging. If everybody qualifies differently in the time and did you get in, that's not right. So we need to fix that, and I think the code can fix that. We also do need a working insurance of development right program because there are in-city TDRs that could move it from critical areas where you're not supposed to develop and put some of that density in town center for the benefit of everybody. Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. I'm actually pretty confident you'll still be around in 10 years.
I'm not going to be coming every meeting.
Me neither. Anybody on the teams, on the call? No?
No.
James not on there? All right. Anything else from staff?
Just my meeting plug, every meeting plug for the Fourth of July video interview with Rich's team. Fourth of the plateau, they'll be set up around 7:00 PM, and I emailed the commission the list of questions that the, they'll be asking. So please, if you show up, stop by the booth and be part of the video.
Great. Would someone move to adjourn, please?
Second.
Moving to second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Thank you, everyone. Enjoy the warm weather and we will see you soon.